Thank you. Thank you. Sorry that we're starting a little late here. Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. It's a board special meeting, February 24th. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. First up is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to put that on the table? All right. Thank you. Michael, Joseph, can I get a second? Laura Costin, all in favor of the consent agenda? I think it's okay if we do hands and then we ask Cody to. Cody, give it a thumbs up. Okay, that passes eight zero. Thank you, Cody. Okay, with that, let's go straight into our public hearing. GHS student government, they are here. Wonderful. Thanks, guys. Come on down.
Good evening Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. I'm Javi Sarah, Senior Class President at Greenwich High School. Last month, I spoke about the anxiety of students in the lead up to midterm exams. Now, I'm pleased to report that we got through them. I would like to thank our school administrators, especially Mrs. Tulata, our Vice Principal, for their willingness to collaborate with student government about midterms. Due to the waiting accommodation, students who did poorly will not be significantly harmed by this one exam, and students who did well will still stand to benefit. I would like to advocate for the permanent institution of this flexible waiting policy because it will reduce the stress amongst students to some degree, while continuing to offer students with a higher stakes learning experience. Thanks to teachers, department heads, and administrators, many grades were curved heavily this year because the raw scores were relatively lower than prior years. This served as a reminder to us all that we still have some ground to make up since COVID disrupted learning nearly two years ago. Before the February break, students enjoyed semester two kickoff activities, including fun games at lunch and ice cream giveaways. Additionally, Roots and Shoots hosted a canned food drive that collected more than 1,000 non-perishable items to benefit neighbor to neighbor. Now I have a piece of bittersweet news from the senior class. Standing room only, better known as SRO, will not take place this year due to a lack of student signups. Ms. Foster and the SRO chairs worked tirelessly to recruit participants for this longstanding GHS tradition, but based on a student survey, there was just not enough interest. While this may be somber news to many here tonight, we are committed to creating a new tradition where the whole senior class will come together before the curtains close and our time on Ten Hillside. Lastly, I just wanted to express my personal excitement at the unanimous board decision to repeal the mask policy. Considering our high vaccination rates and low cases, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone's faces again. As always, thank you for this opportunity and for offering your time here tonight. I look forward to speaking in a month's time.
Thank you so much, Tommy.
Good evening Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. I'm Kwame Blotting, Student Body President of Greenwich High School. To build off of Javi, I think it is fair to say that many students are excited about the board's decision to make masks optional. I am personally thrilled to see everyone's faces after what seems like an eternity. However, it is equally fair to say that our feelings are not necessarily the norm. While many students have been eager to move forward and are dealing with COVID, many are still scared about a possible future of unknown variants and spikes in cases. While some may think that making mask wearing optional will polarize our student body, I am more than confident that empathy and understanding will supersede division. If we can take any way away from the last two years of this pandemic, it would be our community's capacity to sacrifice and care for one another and the common good. I would like to use my time tonight to thank the board, the GHS administration, and all teachers for showing the utmost diligence and care for us students during the pandemic. As we look forward to March 1st and beyond, I'm certain that GHS is prepared for what the future holds. This year, mandatory homeroom classes were added to our schedule as a state requirement. Its intent is to create bonds that last the duration of high school. In many aspects, homeroom works to achieve this goal with activities and resources provided by administration. However, many students believe that there is an opportunity to make improvements. If the fundamental purpose of a homeroom is to build a more intimate community within our larger GHS community, then this activity should be casual and meaningful for students to enjoy collectively. From my perspective, playing a game of Uno or charades with peers would result in a closer knit community as opposed to individually completing assignments that seem to have little connection to our GHS experience. As student representatives, we are excited to collaborate with the GHS administration to strengthen homeroom for the future. And finally, we would like to give a shout out to central middle school students and staff that joined us at GHS a week before break. We know it wasn't easy, and we are grateful that CMS has been able to safely return to their building. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Take care, and I look forward to seeing you all next month.
Thank you so much, Kwame. Up next is GEA. Is Lil here or is she online? Okay.
Lil, if you unmute, you can speak.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members, teachers, parents, and members of our community who are listening online. I'm Liling Peron, President of the Greenwich Teachers Education Association with over 900 members strong. I'm happy that our board had a unanimous vote eight zero for moving to unmask starting March 1st and going back to normal. But what does that really mean for our students, teachers, staff, and community? We have all been in a state of trauma for the last two and a half years. I don't think we can just flip an internal switch and just say, "All is well," as if nothing happened. We need to engage in conversation and then check in to see how well we all are doing. What do we need to give our staff and students in supports, both mentally and physically? We have all witnessed the trauma and division that has happened in our community. Everyone has suffered in some way. Our parents, who did not have the choice for the children, not wear masks, to those who have concerns about teaching or their children being in a room now in close contact with unmasked individuals. We need to take things slow and one organized step at a time. The only thing I do know is that we all need to be kind and compassionate to each other, as we just heard tonight. We may not know what is going on in each individual's home or with family members of parents, students, and teachers who are health compromised. Our younger children may not understand. And speaking with a few parents, they shared how they told their children it was okay to take their mask off, but their children still said that they wanted to keep it on. Is that fear, anxiety? I don't know. And we won't know until we engage in that conversation. Things are not back to normal. We need to be there as a community of caring humans and support all through this transition. I like to change gears. I am fascinated with our financial report, pages 14 to 19, quite interesting. The amount of repairs and replacement items, which is absolutely fantastic and kudos to Dan Watson and his crew, just to mention a few. HBA repairs, Cosco, Greenwich High School, Eastern Middle School, Western, Havemeyer, North Myannis, North Street, Parkway, Riverside, North Myannis, Ionization, and along with four other schools. That's absolutely fantastic. Just what teachers have been asking for. Just about every school, plumbing, electrical, roofs, generators, to name a few. Most interesting though, projects, 2022, 42, 2021, 91, 2020, 69, 2019, 49, 2018, 18? And I didn't have the information before that. That's concerning. This is what I do know. The mess our school buildings are in. This did not happen overnight. The current people in the jobs now or on this board are not responsible for this mess, but they are working hard to fix the problems. Our town elected leaders are responsible for not making it a priority to keep up the maintenance of our public schools. I will be engaging them in conversation. They have let our students, staff, and Greenwich community down. I personally had to work with three trash barrels in my classroom, ceiling tiles falling down, and sewage coming up through the drain. And I have everything documented with photos, which I will be sharing. Sadly to say, this is not a rare occurrence throughout the district, but it will and must stop. Every time a building closes, it not only affects our students, but it also is carried on the backs of our teachers. Imagine being given only a few hours to pack up, go to a new site, and now being ready to teach. That's what our central teachers had to do and our North Myannis staff before them. Not to mention the impact it had on the three intake schools, the custodians, all the administration, and support staff that made it happen. Our teachers are always there to do the right thing. They show up. They do what needs to be done and get it done. Now I'm asking our town leaders to do the same, and our community should be asking them to. Thank you. To be continued.
Thank you very much, Lil. Next up, comments from PTA Council is Mimi Duffe online.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Education. I'm Mimi Duffe, President of PTA Council, representing 15 school PTAs and the families of all their members. I was happy to see the heavy concentration of central middle school discussions on tonight's agenda. I hope by now you know that we, PTAC, stand in support of fixing and funding all of our facilities, not limited to central middle school. As we transition to the mask optional world in Greenwich Public Schools, we are left with the question, what are we doing to support our students, teachers, and other staff through this unprecedented transition? We've heard in these forums from families whose children know no other version of school except for with a mask, and from teachers who are fearful as they cannot control who is and isn't vaccinated. For each of the vocal brave folks who have shared their stories, we know there are many others who may have a health issue or other concerns. Even kids who are supposed to be excited to go maskless may feel fearful after such a long road. We need to make sure we are providing support for everyone through this transition. By now, I'm sure you're aware that these PTAC folks are an organized group of super volunteers. Some of you listening may be wondering what PTAC is. We have a website on the district page, and I encourage you to check it out and get involved. Among other things, our roles include coordinating PTA efforts and programs, facilitating communications, and advocating with a unified voice. Let me tell you, our team is strong and mighty. Tonight, I want to acknowledge my board members and the other volunteers that I get to work with that make my job more meaningful. One conversation I had this week with a couple committee chairs was around advocacy, and it really resonated with me. They were saying that advocacy is hard. It is hard. It's especially hard, in my opinion, in a world where fake news is easy to spread. I truly appreciate the Board of Ed meeting process that has materials distributed in advance internally and to the public so participants and listeners can show up prepared and be efficient in doing the hard work to improve our schools. I would like to call on the BET to adopt the same procedure. One recent meeting had some surprise charts where the data sources were not cited, appeared incorrect to my eyes, and were met with surprise. This element of surprise may seem catchy to some, but it's no way to conduct business and have meaningful discussions around the best ways to meet the needs of our schools. I urge the BET to shift toward a process where materials are presented to the community in advance of the meetings so that we can, so others can review, fact check, and prepare. Regarding advocacy, I'll remind you of Teddy Roosevelt's paraphrase quote, "Nothing worth having was ever achieved without effort." In terms of follow-up items, I'd like to highlight the following on our hot list. We would still like to see measurable goals in math with regular updates provided by school. We appreciate the attention given to the math and science reviews, and we look forward to reviews for language arts and social studies. We would also like to see a follow-up conversation with respect to the security incident at GHS last winter. We would like to see explicit line item funding for both the GHS Science Research Program and also the broader assured experiences across the district. Specifically, we'd like to see the assured experience funding levels restored, which will help level the playing field. Finally, we'd like to ensure that the Board of Ed meetings remain hybrid with a remote option. We have never seen so much community engagement at our Board of Ed meetings. I pleaded a strong case for public comment at the last meeting, and I continue to feel very strongly on this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mimi. That takes us into the community comments. As always, it's the order is agenda items, then non-agenda items. And I'll try to announce the next speaker so we could move along and make sure everyone gets up here. So first up, Jackie Holman, who is apparently speaking on the CMS capital request, followed by Julia Farinars.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Dr. Jones, I originally planned to speak about the debacle that was created by the mismanagement of Central and the fact that Central students were sitting socially distanced in gyms and auditoriums, not learning at all for a whole week. Literally just sitting there staring at each other. But then my twins got their course selection information for ninth grade, and I learned that the same book that appeared in my older son's work that prompted me to make these thought-provoking posters is still part of the curriculum. So once again, I complained. The graphic novel contains pictures that were so offensive, your security officer prevented me from displaying them. Yet somehow you've decided it's okay to assign readings from a book that says, "All women are whores." A book that shows graphic imagery of a man's penis as he pees on the naked back of another man. A book that says, "Women like me should be pushed against a wall and fucked and then thrown in the garbage." When I complained about it again, Dr. Carabio said it was optional, but students didn't feel that way. It's been in the curriculum for four years. The board is required by Connecticut law to approve all curriculum. So Chairman Stowe, when exactly did the board approve Persepolis? Or have you decided to stop reviewing and approving curriculum and let the superintendent willfully violate the laws of Connecticut instead? Did you know you're also in violation of your own policy number 6141.323 regarding internet acceptable use? It says that you must block or filter access to visual depictions that are obscene, contain child pornography, or are harmful to minors, including a lewd exhibition of the genitals. That's why the security officer blocked me from showing the posters. It seems to me that either the board or your only employee has ignored all of the statutory and legal requirements regarding curriculum. When was the last time you approved new curriculum anyway? You haven't approved Ruler, yet you've been testing it on children at Eastern. Isn't that illegal according to Connecticut law? You need to immediately stop teaching Ruler. It's unapproved psychological programming, and it promotes viewing the world through an equity lens, which, as we all know, is a euphemism for teaching the tenants of critical race theory. You need to direct the superintendent to immediately remove all other unapproved curriculum, including social emotional learning. We all know that these are not just modifications to previously approved content. It's all unapproved. And you need to uphold your legal obligation to approve all curriculum going forward so that you can protect children from harmful content like this in the future. My children should not be getting this for ninth grade. There are much better texts available for this, and you all know it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holman. Next up is Julia Farinars, speaking on New Courses GHS, followed by Amy Moof.
Okay. Good evening, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education, Cabinet, PTA, and Community. My name is Julie Farinars, and I am the Executive Director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. The Alliance is the only nonprofit in Greenwich 100% focused on our public school students, teachers, families, and alumni. Our vision reads, "In partnership with the Greenwich Public Schools, the Greenwich Alliance for Education drives innovation, opportunity, and access in learning to empower all students to achieve academic, personal, and professional success." And it relates, as it relates to our vision, I am here tonight to express the Alliance's interest and support of the new state mandated GHS elective course, African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies. As mentioned in the report, this course embodies and develops many vision of the graduate principles, particularly recognize and respect other cultural contexts and points of view. A capacity that is so important today and always. This course would not only celebrate the history and culture of our GHS students and families of color, but also expand understanding, empathy, and ability to affect change for all GHS students. It is the Alliance's hope that all community members will adopt a learning mindset around these issues and questions, and that the board will support the school in its commitment to provide this course and encourage student participation. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Julie. Thanks always to the Greenwich Alliance. Next up, Amy Moof, speaking on New Courses at GHS, followed by Cara Filbin.
Hello.
You're good. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Jones and BOE members. I speak tonight as a parent of a current and former GPS student. I've thought often of last month's public BOE meeting, particularly the language that was used to discuss some of the topics at hand. As a community member and frequent and longtime attendee of these meetings, we've become accustomed as of late to the comments of the new but very loud minority in town. But it was most disturbing to hear the language our BOE members used and how they were in contradiction to our school norms in creating community and culture, in a culture of inclusiveness for our students. It inspired me to remind myself of the BOE's mission statement and what its overall role is. As you know, the Board of Education is the governing body of the district and shall govern the district in such a manner that it sets the national standard for governance, oversight, public engagement, and stewardship of the public education system. The mission of GPS is to educate all students to their highest level of academic potential and to teach them the skills and knowledge to become capable, creative, and responsible members of society. To me, this sounds like the overarching responsibility of the BOE is to set policies and oversight that supports the mission of GPS. With that in mind, I'd like to speak directly to the failed passage of the updated Title IX policy, a policy that provides protection at a state and federal level, but locally was already late to be approved. The reasons of concern for why we shouldn't pass the Title IX updates were focused on the most vulnerable population, transgendered youth, and how they might take away opportunities from our cisgendered girls. I have a daughter at GPS, and I want her to have every opportunity, but I don't want it at the expense of another child. Again, you are talking about a very small and vulnerable population. One of the board members made the comment of this being a moral conversation, but the conversation was anything but moral. If you look at the data around transgender youth, particularly the Trevor Project's Third Annual National Survey on LGBTQ youth mental health in 2021, it found that 52% of all transgender and non-binary young people in the US seriously contemplated killing themselves in 2020. More than half thought it would be better to be dead rather than trying to live with rejection, isolation, loneliness, bullying, and being targeted by politicians and activists pushing anti-trans legislation. Imagine there were transgendered youth listening to the board talk about the Title IX policy update last month. Imagine how they might have felt. These are the children you should be concerned about protecting, who need protecting through your policies. But if you want to bring it back to cisgendered girls, and say you instead put my biracial daughter, likely at a greater risk of needing Title IX protection. Further, the conversation around the state required Black and Latino history elective, which will move from a pilot to a requirement next fall, was equally upsetting. We should be celebrating that Connecticut became the first state in the nation to require every public high school to offer an elective in this content, but instead, and to celebrate the GPS as part of the pilot program. But instead, the aggressive behavior and language used by board members around this topic was shocking. It shifted to a conversation about CRT, which was not mentioned either by the teacher administrator or state requirements.
Thank you very much, Amy. If you have further comments, please email them to us. Next up is Cara Filbin on New Courses GHS, followed by Jennifer Behet. I don't see Cara online, do you? Okay, could always come back. Let's go next on Jennifer Behet on CMS Capitol Request, followed by Isabel Harper.
Good evening Chair Stowe, distinguished members of the Board of Education and Dr. Jones. My name is Jennifer Behet. I am the co-president of the Central Middle School PTA. Tonight, however, I will be speaking as a parent of a sixth grader at Central Middle School, as well as the parent of a future sixth grader there. With the rights and privileges bestowed upon you in your elected capacities, I implore this board to do what is right and necessary to resolve the crisis at Central Middle School. The directive is simple at best. Make Central safe, not for the week, month, or year, but rather for future generations. Let not history repeat itself with lack of expeditious action, procrastination, and accountability. Our kids, staff members, and parents are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Next up is Isabel Harper on New Courses GHS, followed by Janet McMahon.
Hi, my name is Isabel Harper, and I'm a student at GHS. And I just wanted to just say how important it is for the student body of GHS that this new course on Black and Latino history be adopted by GHS. And I think every student that I know, including myself, wants to learn the whole history of the country, not just of one specific culture, but like of all the cultures that have helped to grow the country to what it is now. And to have an inclusive and an accurate representation of the happenings of history and everybody that contributed to all of the new ideas and to all the foundations of what our national identity is today. So I just wanted to voice support for this curriculum and also to communicate that there are many students who are excited to take this course and that I want to congratulate all of the effort that went into creating this history course that is a long time in the making, but is very welcomed by everybody who wants to take it and the student body in general. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Isabel. We always love hearing from the students. Next up, Janet McMahon on CMS Capitol Request, followed by Michelle Voight.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Janet.
Great. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, members of the Board of Education and the broader Greenwich community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Janet McMahon, and as a parent of a Central Middle School student and a soon-to-be Central Middle School student in two years, I urge you to approve any and all interim and Capitol requests to get CMS repaired and rebuilt without delay. Additionally, as a taxpayer and a member of the GPS community, I also urge you to accelerate the Julian Curtis renovations so that this critical and long-awaited project does not get delayed or forgotten. Just because Julian Curtis is not crumbling yet doesn't mean we can continue to kick that can down the road. Delaying Julian Curtis would not only delay all of the projects behind it, including the much-needed ADA renovations at Old Greenwich and Riverside, but it will also come with additional costs to town as construction and labor costs only continue to rise. And as we're seeing with CMS, rebuilding always costs more than renovating. I and many others stand with the Julian Curtis community, who have been patiently waiting for almost a decade for ADA-compliant and modernized facilities. They have followed all the processes and procedures. They have suffered from stifling classrooms, lack of elevators, and inadequate pre-K and special education facilities for far too long. They have dodged countless ADA lawsuits, but at some point, their luck will run out and it will become an expensive town problem. There is unity in our community. That now is the time to fix our schools, all of them, not just the one. not just the ones that we have neglected to the point that they're crumbling beyond repair like CMS. You alone have the power to request the funds, so please exercise that authority and let the BET figure out how to finance it. Finally, I want to take a minute to express my wholehearted support for the new Black and Latinx Studies elective as mandated by the state. It is critical to teach our children the whole of American history, from past to present and from a variety of perspectives, especially from the perspective of those most marginalized in our society. I'm only sorry that it took this long for it to be offered as an elective and look forward to creating more enlightened, learned, and critically-thinking GHS graduates. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next up, Michelle Voight on CMS Repairs, followed by Mira Klockenbrink.
Good evening. Board Chair Stowe, distinguished members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Jones, as a parent of two Central Middle School students, I ask that you remedy, repair, and/or rebuild Central Middle School immediately.
Wait, what?
I ask that you approve the request for interim funding to create Central Middle School educational specifications. Approve the request to modify the capital request to pull forward the AE funding for Central Middle School to the current 2023 BOE budget request in the amount of $2,500,000. Approve the interim funding for bridging and temporary repairs at Central Middle School of the masonry design as designed by DTC. Additionally, and most importantly, I am asking that you put measures in place to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Central Middle School students and employees of Greenwich Public Schools through additional, regular, and ongoing engineering safety inspections until Central Middle School is no longer occupied or is demolished. It is my understanding that the district annually performs facilities, mechanical inspections by GPS facility management. This is not adequate. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, Mira Klockenbrink on New Courses GHS, followed by Molly Salibi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Myra Klockenbrink, and I am a Greenwich resident. When I was born, it was illegal for a white woman to marry a black man. Our children would have been forced to attend segregated schools. In my lifetime, in this town and in towns and cities across the country, signs hung in country clubs and other establishments barring Jews and Blacks' entry. With time and a lot of hard work, these laws and practices have given way, and we now live in a multiracial society. We brought our multiracial family to Greenwich some years ago to take advantage of its fine schools, and our children have received an exemplary education. Next year, our son will have the welcome opportunity to take a course in Black and Latino history. The curriculum for this course is stunning in its comprehensiveness. It is more than can be taught in a single year. And if it were up to me, I would mandate it along with reading, writing, and arithmetic. It is that foundational to becoming a literate American. A Republican member of the board threatened last meeting to audit the course. I recommend all the Republican members audit it since they are suspicious of its use. I recommend their Democratic counterparts to audit it as well since they were silent when its validity was called into question. We should all take the course, since it seems there is so much yet we have to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mira. Next up, Molly Salibi, followed by Brian Zeller.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you. Central Middle School, glad to see the A&E funding request being moved up as I called for a couple of weeks ago in a public letter, and others have had thoughts about it. I realize that's not an original idea nor a novel thought. But, and I'm asking everyone to work together to get this timeline moving as fast as possible without cutting corners. I believe a lack of thorough communication is the root of all problems or most problems. There are lots of support for this in the community, lots of different entities from the BET to the RTM. Everyone is standing ready, please. And I also hope that the school financing scandal up in Hartford is all sorted out and doesn't have any effect on our timeline. I think as well, you know, if it were up to a lot of us, this building would be getting demolished this summer, and children would be going to a rental place, and this would be getting built in a couple of years. I have a very good friend with a sixth grader here who has a first grader. And, you know, looking at the timeline, maybe kids are in this building for six months or so in a new building by the time this child is ready for the sixth grade here. So it's painful how slow things can be. I understand that we're subject to process and public funding, but whatever we can do to keep bureaucracy at a minimum, and let's get this moving. And there are a lot of people, a lot of volunteers, ready to help in whatever way we can. The kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Next up, Brian Zeller on CMS Capital Request, followed by Peter Scher.
Hi, good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, and members of the board. My name is Brian Zeller, and I'm the co-president and speaking on behalf of the Central Middle School PTA. First, we want to acknowledge and thank CMS Principal Mr. Healy, the rest of the CMS administration, the teachers, and the staff for their efforts during the challenging times over the last few weeks. We'd also like to thank Greenwich High School, Eastern Middle School, and the Cos Cob School PTAs for their incredible support and for being such gracious and wonderful hosts. We also wanted to thank Dr. Jones and Mr. Watson for their time in addressing and answering the questions from our parents during our PTA meeting during the week when we were at our host schools. And last but not least, we wanted to thank the CMS parents for their flexibility and their support. You know, as you know, given the events of the last few weeks, CMS, we cannot wait on any further delays or deferments to next year's budget cycle. The time is now to approve a more aggressive timeline for a rebuild of CMS. We ask, you know, in an effort to further limit the impact on future CMS students and parents, that the BOE, the BET, the RTM, all the governing bodies work intensely and work in concert to move this project forward as quickly as the process will allow. And finally, once the CMS budget is approved, we hope for the sake of the broader Greenwich Public School community that a shared vision may be adopted by the respective governing bodies to ensure that a thoughtful, transparent, and aggressive approach to the modernization of other Greenwich Public Schools could happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Brian. Next up, Peter Scher. This is the beginning of Non-Agenda Items, followed by Mary Heaven.
Actually, we speak on an agenda item, but I registered that way. Hello, I wanted to address the board about curriculum, especially curriculum management. I wanted to make two points. Point one is, tonight you'll take up a new social study curriculum course called African American Black and Puerto Rican/Latino Studies. It's comprised of 59 lessons. It's described in a 300-page document. It's a really interesting course. I hope that I would have the chance to take it. The content seems excellent, interesting, topical, engaging. However, there's a problem with this course, and I want to make a suggestion to the board on how it can remedy. The board has committed numerous times that critical race theory is not, shall not be taught in Greenwich Public Schools. Unless you change that, that's your current commitment. Dr. Jones has repeatedly claimed that CRT and CRT concepts are not being taught in Greenwich Public Schools and will not be taught in Greenwich Public Schools. Yet here they are proposing a course that by the actual description in the document is teaching anti-racist principles. The problem exists in six out of the 59 lessons that are taught in the curriculum. If you address these six, you can probably address that and make sure that the Greenwich curriculum does not become politicized. There's a lesson called systemic racism. If you're not familiar with CRT, systemic racism is at the heart of that concept. It's systemic racism, 1965 to present. It's a four-day course. Then there's a further one on Black Lives Matter. If you've seen the actual content, that's all about CRT as well. There are four other modules that are problematic. If you aren't aware, Connecticut is the state in the nation with the highest number of Italian-American descendants. There are four modules about Columbus depicting him as essentially conducting genocide and then essentially talking about how the United States is occupied and created massacres in Puerto Rico. I think that content's a little bit offensive. I would tell you that the other 50-plus lessons look great, and I would look forward to taking them. Point two, this isn't the only place where there are lessons being taught in Greenwich Public Schools with these kinds of problems. As it was said by someone else tonight, under Connecticut statutes, the board is required to review and approve all curriculum. That's also true in your own policy of the board.
Thirty seconds.
That's not happening in a couple areas, so I have three suggestions about what you should do. Stop teaching curriculum that isn't approved, particularly SEL. Make all curriculum sent through the authorized curriculum committee so that it can be brought to the board and approved. And then fulfill that commitment that's unfulfilled from Dr. Jones to make all of the BOE curriculum available in a public site. Please take these actions to build public trust in our students' education and prevent the infection of partisan ideologies plaguing other school systems around the country. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Peter. Next up is Mary Heaven, followed by Roger. Oh, Jamie John, that seems that she was removed from the list upon her request, according to this, so. So next up then, Mary Heaven, followed by Roger Rosendahl. I'm not seeing her. Are you guys? No.
I don't see her online. If she is online, if she could raise her hand. Not seeing any hands, I suggest.
We'll move forward then. Roger Rosendahl, are you online, followed by Frances Novae?
I'm not seeing Roger online, Mr. Rosendahl, so.
I don't see him here. Okay, so then Frances Novae.
Hello, this is Frances Novae, mom of three GPS students, including two CMS Cougars. Tonight, I'm reminded of a book by Naz Khan called Room for Everyone. Khan's rhyming counting book selected as Kirkus 2021 Best Picture Book tells a charming tale of a trip to the beach to show us how we join together and make space with shared humanity, compassion, and inclusion. Let's enjoy an excerpt. "The dala-dala rumbled and roared, and Musa and Dada were off to the shore to feast on fish at the Friday bazaar by the blue crystal waters of Zanzibar. Soon after zooming past Ulakea Street, they saw one old man and his bike with no seat. So the driver honked, pulled to the side, and asked, 'Dear brother, do you need a ride? It's hotter than peppers out there in the sun. Come in. There's room for everyone.' But Dada said, 'Musa, I don't think there is enough room for that man and that cycle of his. Don't worry, Musa, there's space galore. If you move just a bit, we can make room for more.' Onward they went with a honk and a toot, till vendors appeared with three baskets of fruit. So they pulled to the side, and as you can guess, Musa cried out and began to protest. 'Mangoes and melons and paratychi, we don't have the space. Please listen to me.' But up came the baskets of tropical fruits and down-dripped the juices on ankles and boots. Everyone wiggled and giggled galore, till somehow they carved out a space on the floor. The dala-dala drove past some farms till they saw five mamas with fish in their arms. So the conda struck his head outside, yelling, 'Sisters, hello, do you need a ride?' 'No,' cried Musa. 'This rickety bench has no room for those fish and their ickety stench.' But the passengers wiggled and squished on the floor and made enough room for the ride to the shore. The passenger shouted, 'Do you need a ride?' And as you can guess, Musa worried and cried. 'This is outrageous. We can't let them in. We're already smushed like sardines in a tin. Though it was clearly a very tight fit, they wouldn't give up. No, they just wouldn't quit. The tires were reeling and spinning and burning, the passengers sweating and twisting and turning, elbow to shoulder, beak to nose, feathers to feet, udders to toes. What a sight to see! What a comical crew, stuckey together like gobbledegoo, the clunkety-clunk like junk in a trunk, so close to the breakdown, kerplunkety-clunk. When suddenly, all of them heard a screech. Alhamdulillah, at last! At last, they had finally reached the blue crystal waters of Nungui Beach, where Musa and Dada and everyone could wiggle and giggle under the sun. Greenwich Public School community, we make room for everyone. Wiggles and giggles, heart to heart. With respect and curiosity, we learn together."
Thank you so much, Frances. Since we had, we skipped. Well, Cara, I see that you're now here, and you weren't here before. Would you like to speak now, since we're on to non-agenda items? And I know you've been here for an agenda item. And then we'll go back to non-agenda items.
Hi. At the town hall, proposed spending was for roller training, which will embed social, emotional learning into core academics. We were told that parent input for SIR funding would be collected until August. However, teachers were already being trained in roller training in June. Roller training is currently being piloted at Eastern Middle School. For example, students were given a political quiz with questions like, "What is your stance on abortion? Should the government continue to fund Planned Parenthood? Should health insurance providers be required to offer free birth control? Should the Electoral College be abolished? Should foreigners currently residing in the US have the right to vote? Should a photo ID be required? Should funding for local police departments be redirected to social and community-based programs? Should the government require children to be vaccinated for preventable disease? Who would you vote for in the Connecticut US Senate gubernatorial and presidential election?" Nearly 50 questions. Later, it ranked students' answers for their list of nine political parties, including, new to me, transhumanism. Why are we embedding roller training into our core academics with declining performance and COVID academic loss? Who on the BOE approved roller training to be embedded into our core academics? Who on the BOE reviewed and approved the assignments? Who on the Board of Ed can describe transhumanism to me anyway? There was an eight-zero vote telling district to leave our advanced learning program alone. Who on the BOE, despite this eight-zero vote, approved and allowed our middle school advanced science program being mainstreamed into the classroom? Who on the BOE approved our traditional classical English language arts elementary app program to be infused with social studies with a focus on perspective, bias, and social responsibility? Which BOE members are going to reinstate our advanced learning programs that should have remained unchanged per the eight-zero vote immediately? Regarding, parents want curriculum transparency, and they want the curriculum in advance. They want the Board of Education to fulfill their role to review curriculum and to prove it. Regarding Central Middle School, for the 2.5 billion capital request for feasibility assessment, I did the walkthrough. There is significant drainage coming down the two hillsides into the area of most in need. And it's my opinion that if you rebuild in the same spot, you're going to have continued damage in those particular areas. So it doesn't seem necessary to do this feasibility assessment.
Thank you so much, Cara. Please feel free to email us further with your comments.
It should be rebuilt on higher land.
Next up is Caitlin DeForest, followed by Sarah Klisinski.
Hi, how are you? I'm a parent of a third grader at North Myana School. I'm here today to say thank you. Thank you to all the teachers and the staff for doing what you do. As an ER nurse, I know how discouraging it can be when you are constantly being told you're doing it wrong or not good enough. Since the day my daughter has stepped foot into North Myanis School, she was welcomed with nothing short of the warmest hearts. Not one day in four years has she come home from school upset or had something negative to say despite the challenges we have faced as a community. We have truly been blessed with the greatest teachers. So without going any further, I want to tell you that there is a community that stands behind you and appreciates everything you do for our children on a daily basis. Thank you for choosing to be a part of the most important times in our children's lives, guiding them and helping them grow. Remember, the noise is just noise. Eventually, it gets drowned out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next up, Sarah Klisinski, followed by Alyssa Vanos.
Good evening, Chairperson Stowe, Board of Education members, Dr. Jones, Administration and Community members. My name is Sarah Klisinski, and I am here tonight on behalf of the North Myanis PTA as one of the co-presidents. I am speaking to you tonight to show our continual support for our teachers, staff, and administrations. We are lucky that our children are educated at a very high performing elementary school. In two thousand twenty-one, US News and World Report ranked North Myanis number thirteen out of all Connecticut elementary schools. Just three years ago, in twenty nineteen, North Myanis won the National Blue Ribbon Award as one of the nation's exemplary high performing schools. We currently have seven, twenty-eight percent of our classroom teachers, distinguished teachers, according to Greenwich Public Schools Award Winning, teaching all of our four hundred and ninety-five students. And North Myanis has eighteen former distinguished teachers, including a twenty twenty teacher of Connecticut Teacher of the Year semifinalist. It is clearly a school of full of amazing and talented and successful educators. We, as parents, are truly lucky to have our children being educated and cared for by the teachers, staff, and administrators at North Myanis School. We support their teaching decisions throughout the day and know that our children's best interests are at the forefront of all of them. Over the last twenty-four months, they have been through the sudden shutdown of all schools to move to asynchronous remote learning that had never been done before. Then back to teaching in person during a pandemic while worrying not only about our children falling behind, but also keeping them safe physically and mentally. And then three hundred and seventy-seven days ago, one of our fourth grade classrooms had a devastating ceiling collapse. You all know what followed, a sudden pivot back to the remote learning and then twenty-five of our classes being split between four different schools, with administrations and special teachers driving across town all day rather than just walking down the hall to another classroom. And then moving once again to the former Trinity High School in Stanford and finally back to North Myanis in December. All that has happened in the last twenty-four months has taken a toll on all of us. But the seventy-five people who work at North Myanis, and for that matter, the teachers and staff at all the other fourteen schools as well, have had it even harder. They have had to put aside their personal frustration, exhaustion, and fears to support our children's education,
Thirty seconds.
Educational and mental needs and their safety. We, the North Myanis parents, thank them and support them. We are all human and living through this pandemic together. We should treat each other with kindness. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up, Alyssa Vanos.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alyssa Vanos, and I'm the parent of a seventh grader and speaking as co-chair for PTAC's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, a special committee created this year that we will hopefully make permanent. My co-chair, Ami Muth, and I work with individual DEI reps from each school in the district. Our mission is to foster an overall sense of belonging within GPS community by building relationships and inviting diverse perspectives to the PTA. Tonight, we'd like to speak to the, to speak about our community norms. Be here, be safe, be honest, care for self and others, let go and move on. I say community norms because I truly feel that we are all responsible for being an example of these norms. I also believe that some version, they are all some version of what we try to impart to our children in our homes. And I do believe that we are all here in service of what is best for our children. Be here, be present. Our kids should be able to experience their school days free of the noise that gets in the way of their education, a complete education, a factual education. Greenwich is a multicultural town, and our children will go into the world, a global multicultural world. I expect that we will want them to succeed. As a committee, we believe they should be exposed to a rich and diverse curriculum. Be safe. Our children should feel safe in our schools. All of our children should feel they can be their authentic selves and not fear bullying, discrimination, or harassment. We, as adults in this community, should be sending a message that all children will experience a sense of safety and belonging in our schools. We were baffled by the refusal to pass Title Nine locally at last month's board meeting. While we still have state and federal protection for Title Nine, by not passing Title, the Title Nine update, it sends the message that we do not believe in providing the safety and protection to all of our children, especially vulnerable transgendered youth. Be honest. Our children deserve to learn from and participate in an honest environment. What we teach and what we are willing to face about the history of the US shows integrity, removes barriers, and opens opportunities for honest conversation. We should not lean away from our history. We applaud the efforts of GPS in piloting Public Act nineteen dash twelve, the law that directs all regional and local boards of education to include the course of studies at the high school level, which provides students with a better understanding of African American, Black, Puerto Rican, and Latina contributions to the United States' history, society, economy, and culture. This description in no way implies critical race theory, and it's dishonest to imply that it does. Care for self and others. We are community. We are not each having complete, completely unique and individualized experiences. We teach our kids to be kind, help others if you see someone being harmed. Our children learn from our actions, the things we say.
Thirty seconds.
When they think we're not listening. A recent Forbes article stated that empathy is the most important leadership skill in business today. It's always been important, but going forward, it is imperative for employee engagement and retention. Learning empathy starts here in our schools with our kids. Let go and move on. None of us are perfect, but we are good. It's the mistakes we make that we learn from. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our community comments. Thanks, everybody, for coming out or for joining us on Zoom. Now we will go into our monthly reports, and first up is the superintendent's report.
I just have a couple of items I want to mention tonight. First of all, I think most people saw the announcement that we have three incredible principals who are retiring. And I just want to take this opportunity to say thank, thank you to them for decades of service to GPS. And they did let us know several weeks ago, so I just also want to assure the community that Terry Ricky at IST, we have Jean Schmidt at COSCOB, and Angela Schmidt at North Myanis, that we are hard at work on getting the process ready for an inclusive hiring process that will include engagement with families, with staff. And we are, we will make that happen and be communicating to those communities, but I know it's, they're all so loved. It's a big change for those communities. I will also just say thank you, especially to Dan Watson, our facilities, our finance, Sean O'Keefe and his staff for working through February break. You know, it's a time that sometimes it can be, it's always busy for facilities, definitely. But it is a time that usually you can get a little more time off. And it's, it was an incredible, incredible job just getting that building open for Central and getting our kids back in right after the break. And then last but not least, I have already set my alarm for four in the morning. So I've been asked a lot, what's, what's going to happen tomorrow? And the last two snow calls were so difficult that this one looks very similar in that they don't know when it's arriving. They don't know if it's rain, if it's sleet, or it's snow. So it will probably be an early morning call, and I'll leave it at that.
That is a fun part of your job. Okay, committees, yes, Ms. Downey.
Am I on? Yeah. Just in terms of the high school entryway, this is partially agenda planning that the construction drawings, final plans should be before the board at our March meeting. We were hoping to have it done for February, but the PMZ process took a little bit longer than anyone hoped, so we were trying to finalize all of those details, but it will be before the board in March, and then we can move on with the state reimbursement process and hopefully going out to bid and getting the project going.
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
I've got a few things, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. Parks and Rec, I was given the job to be liaison with Parks and Rec, so I decided to do a little research into the Parks and Rec. And luckily, the chairman of Parks and Rec Board is an old friend of mine, Scott Johnson, and he brought me up to speed on a lot of different aspects of that board. What I did find out is that Joseph Liano is the director of Parks and Rec, and he is the one who actually does the work for us. We're the Scott's Board, the Board is an advisory board to the first selectman. So the, as long as I've been on the board, there's been questions about the service that Parks and Rec does for us. So I've asked the first selectman to allow me to invite the director of Parks and Rec to come and join us for a meeting. So if we can schedule a, sometime in the future, Joseph Liano to join us, the first selectman's okay with that, and I'll put it by Joe. And if he's okay with that, which I'm sure he will be, then we'll slot that in, and we'll talk about that as agenda items later on in the, in the meeting. The next topic is the Energy Management Advisory Committee. Kathleen, you passed this off to me a little while ago, and we luckily met a few times. It's a very interesting group, and we have some really good news about something we're working on. Sean O'Keefe has worked very closely and worked very hard on virtual net metering, which is a wonderful thing, where we work with a solar developer, where we lease out some land and, and actually, we're going to get a sign off from legal. We've already put out an RFP on it. What it's going to do is save us a huge amount of, of cost on our electric bill. We work together with a solar developer, renewable energy, so it's all good stuff. And it's going to be savings, a big number of savings for us, and it's going to go on for years and years. So we're at the early stages of it, but Sean is doing a tremendous job making sure that we, that we make this happen this year. We had Eugene Watts had put the RFP out, so it really sounds exciting and could be really happening in the near future. So it's a lot of fun. If anybody has any questions on it, please call me and I'll explain it further. Next one, the Waterfall Project. We just had Sam Bridge join us as far as the group or team of people that will be helping us clean that up in the early spring. We will have a group together to just do the cleanup there, nothing more than the cleanup, but we'll continue along with that project. A bit of fun news, the Greenwich St. Patrick's Day Parade is March twentieth. The Board of Education has secured a position in that parade. Kathleen is, Kathleen and Laura are making up a banner that we're going to march with, and we have invited our teachers, our administrators, the teamsters, the custodians, and the tradesmen, security guards, coaches, BOE staff, and everybody who has anything to do with our schools to march with us and be recognized by the community for their great efforts over the last two years. So we're going to have people meet at the Havemeyer Building. We're going to move over to Town Hall, meet at the Havemeyer Building at one o'clock, move over to Town Hall at two o'clock. We're going to march the route of the St. Patrick's Day Parade down Greenwich Avenue. We're going to spread the word to the community to get out and cheer on those heroes who have worked for the schools and taught our kids and battled over the last couple of years. And hopefully, the community turns out and really supports them. Then we're going to end up at the end of the parade down at the teen center on Art Street, and I have a little gathering down there for our teachers, custodians, teamsters, security guards, coaches, BOE staff, and all our people. So looking forward to that. That's on the twentieth of March, St. Patrick's Day Parade, Greenwich. Next one is the Havemeyer Building. We are working with the first selectman to restore the building to its previous grandeur. What we're looking to do, and this is a promise by our first selectman, is to make sure he understands the need to get our staff better, much better accommodations than they're in right now, because that building is not in the best of shape. So there's lots of other opportunities that first selectman has made it a high priority for him to make sure we find over the next few years the best opportunity to put our staff in really good opportunity for them to function in a better, better surroundings. He is then working in public, public-private partnership to restore Havemeyer. He believes, or they, he's announced that it's going to cost somewhere between twenty-five and fifty million dollars to restore this. He said he is engaged with some, some very generous people to make sure this building gets in the center of Greenwich Avenue, brought up to where it should be. So, so he's, he's working on that with us, and hopefully, we can get that accomplished, because I don't think that we can do the proper service to that building where we have to really dedicate our funds and finances going forward to the school buildings rather than the administration buildings. So he's working very closely on that one. Last is the Safety Road. We're, had made some submissions to wetlands and are moving forward on that project. That's all I got, Kathleen.
Well, that is a lot. I think on Havemeyer, I think I might have to, I know it has to formally come before the board, so let's talk about that for agenda planning purposes. And with, sorry, any other, Michael Joseph, do you have a committee update?
I do. There's, that sounds, okay. So the Strategic Plan Committee met yesterday. We continue to move forward with the timeline that the board reviewed at our last meeting. Recall, there are two different groups here as part of strategic plan. There's the Strategic Plan Committee, which is obviously the board. And then there's the leadership team led by Dr. Jones and the administrators throughout, throughout the district. That team, the leadership team met as well and then started work on the strategic, on their aspect of strategic plan. They do a lot of, because we want them to have ownership of it, they're doing a lot of the work on the ground. Whereas the strategic, while as the strategic, the board Strategic Plan Committee provides some oversight and ideas. So, for example, yesterday at our meeting, we talked about chapters two and three of the book Strategies in Action, which is providing a lot of the basis for the timeline that we rolled out last week, or last month, particularly around what kind of data we'd want the strategic plan to look at and some other ideas around that. As the timeline continues over the next month, as far as next steps, the leadership team is going to be identifying some of the major issues that, if, if addressed, will help us as a system over the next five years more fully realize the existing vision of the graduate. And then look at a root, root cause analysis of those issues. Obviously, this is all moving along towards our June deadline of trying to have so those two to three stretch goals for us to review at our June retreat to guide us over the next five years.
Excellent. Anyone else? Going once, twice? No? Okay. Um, so we don't have any discussion items tonight. We're going straight into action, and it's all things Central, which is very appropriate, given given the state of the building, but it's also great that we're sitting here tonight and that that the administration, and thank you so much, Dan, Mr. Healy, who I think I've mentioned before, I have a child here, and he was out directing traffic the week that we were going to three different schools, and he was just, he was really remarkable. And, but I know everyone's happy to be back. And so with that, let's talk about Central. Ms. Downey?
Yeah, I just, am I on? My, my one concern is just the order that we have these listed on our agenda feels a little backwards, because it kind of jumps, it kind of chronologically. I don't know if there's a way to or just open and have a discussion of Central without having motions first on what we're doing in the fiscal year twenty-three budget versus what we're doing for an interim request. Is it just a question?
It's funny, the BET actually specifically for Monday asked us to do it this way.
Okay, that's fine.
Which is kind of why I just.
It feels a little backwards, because I'm a chronological thinker, so.
Do you care? I mean, do you have a preference?
Well, so, so just for process, then maybe we have the discussion and then we do all, like.
Well, we need to get it on the table, because they are action items. So I think let's just follow the process. I'm sorry to.
That's fine.
And then I'm happy to put it on the table if you want, or.
I'll put it on.
As a budget chair.
So I'll start with a motion that a motion that we take two point five million dollars in the fiscal year twenty-three budget requests we have made to the BET, take it out of Central Building Envelope Masonry and change it to Architecture and Engineering for Central Middle School in the twenty-three budget.
Sorry, are you looking at the whole motion? There's three aspects to this motion.
I know that. That's why I was, I think it's, again, I think it's a little unwieldy personally. And because I also have, well.
Okay.
I've booked a motion on the table second, and then I can.
I'll second it. Okay, sorry, second it.
Okay. I mean, the problem I have with doing it, this is why I said it's a little backwards, is taking out feasibility money until we know that we're going to have. until we know that we're going to have feasibility money on an interim basis seems not wise. I mean, the BET can perfectly take the feasibility money out of next year's budget on their own if they've granted it. But I think until we have that money, it would not be a wise move by this board to delete our request. I don't know what my colleagues think about that.
Go ahead, Karen.
So just to clarify for, for those of us, you're suggesting that instead of reducing our capital requests, FY23 capital request by the amount needed for the feasibility study for FY23.
Not feasible.
For, for the, okay. Instead of us approving our request to modify the FY23 capital request before we have approved the funding for a feasibility study or what have you later on, on our agenda and/or before it has been approved by the BET, is there a way that we could position, maybe not our motion or whatever, saying that if it is, if the feasibility is approved for 20, you know, an interim request is approved for this year, that we would then automatically ask to have the money removed for the following year? So that we're not doubling down with the same, we're not asking for the same line.
I understand what the BET wants, but I also think until we have an approval for feasibility money from them and from the RTM, we shouldn't be deleting our request for next year until we have approval in the current fiscal year.
Well, I guess would be their understanding that if they approve the feasibility, that they could then remove it from the net, you know, FY23.
Right. They can, they can remove it on their own if they approve it for this year.
So just to clarify, the motion on the table is to pull ahead the CMS design request from fiscal year 25 to fiscal year 23 in the amount of two and a half. And then reduce the CMS amount around masonry. And so that the capital overall request is obviously a net zero for fiscal year 23. But it's shifting one item to another, but you're not including, just for everyone's clarity, number one on the motion, and I understand the concept for why you're not. And I think that I suspect BET members are hearing us loud and clear. And that's probably something that they would be comfortable doing on their own, but I understand now why you made the motion that way.
And then in addition, on number two, when we say we're pulling it from 25 to 23, that just goes on a, we're only really making our 23 request right now. So that's why it's not really a pulling it forward. It's taking the 2.5 out of masonry for 23, turning it into A and E in terms of making it a line item in the capital budget so that we are actually asking the BET and the RTM for no extra money in fiscal year 23. And in fact, if we take out the 250, we'll be asking for less.
I agree. I'm sorry, I should give it turn over.
This is why I said it's convoluted.
I, I should turn it over to Sean, just if he wants to weigh in on that because I see him here, and then let's keep the discussion going.
First, first of all, I think the reason why we're having this conversation is because the order is all screwed up.
Thank you, Sean.
Christine, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so we could, if everyone's comfortable moving to the next, I was just. Okay, so let's table the motion.
There are BET members who are texting saying they did not direct any particular order.
Leslie Tarkington for the BET Budget Committee did.
Oh.
Okay, so I'm not making this up. But anyway, um, so I'm fine with switching it. That's just why the order had come this way. But so let's, let's, would you like to withdraw your motion?
Happy to.
Would you like to make another motion for another item on the agenda?
Sure thing. Give me a moment. Um, I'd like to start with a motion to approve an, a request, an interim request for repairs at Central Middle School in the amount of $940,000.
I'm happy to second that motion.
So just the Budget Committee, Sean will speak more to this, was presented without figures, just the concepts here. And, and Dan and Sean, I think are best served to explain both the bridging, which is our, where we are now and our repair process. So I would turn it to the experts.
Okay, in the, the detail underneath the cover sheet, there's a first chart entitled Emergency Cost. So let me take you through that. So we have a total of $717,141 of emergency costs related to the, the, you know, the closure of the school and the bridging activity that took place over the last two weeks. So if you look at the top, we have Werner that did the original bridging installation. It was 264,000. There was an additional change order to add to the bridging that added 142,000 on walls A, B, and C. There was additional lighting requested for 206,000. In order to get everything done so that the students could return by February 22nd, there was some overtime incurred by Werner to the tune of about 40,000. And then finally, there was some installation of some gravel to replace mud and dirt, make it safer around the areas. So the total for the bridging was $662,141. Related costs, we have $50,000 for diversified technology consultants for construction management. The bid process, the putting the bid package together. And also approximately $5,000 for project management for, from a vendor, CSG. So that adds up to $717,000. We do have, we do have available capital funding for masonry. 436,000 from, it's in Central Middle School already available to do this. And another 235 in district wide. So we're utilizing 671,000 of available masonry capital money to pay for the 717. The, the remaining 46,000 we have added to the interim request, which you'll see on the next chart. So if you can flip to the next chart, thank you. So the estimate for the repairs is 860,058. Trade and labor materials, 607,000, 30,000 for general conditions, overhead insurance and profit 75. Contingency at 121. Architectural and engineering and consulting cost 27,000. Total repairs, 860,000. Add to that, the 46,000 that I mentioned was not covered by the existing capital funding from the previous chart. Transportation costs for the week of February 7th through 11th to transport the students from Central to the three schools that were involved. And some police overtime related to traffic. So the, the total of everything is 939 rounded. We rounded up to $940,000 as the request.
Any questions, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, thank you. A little feedback. Nice. Hey, Dan, can I ask you a couple of questions if you don't mind, sir? Go ahead, Joe. Thanks, Dan. As, as many don't know, maybe some do, you and I have worked together before. I'm very confident in your abilities and your experience. And, and I also watched the way you worked and you tend to, to be on the side, even though you've got a lot of responsibilities outside this job itself. Did you spend a fair amount of time supervising this specific project?
Absolutely.
I, it, it, these numbers, in your opinion, and I trust your opinion, I just wanted to hear from you, not that I don't trust Sean's numbers, but Sean is a, is in a different location going over the numbers where you're actually boots on the ground.
Well, these, these are interchangeable. Sean and I spent, and Dr. Jones spent a lot of time on this. We're very comfortable with the numbers. These are our estimates. We look to putting it out for bid soon. We're hoping we don't have another Eastern Civic Center issue. I don't think we will. We've been in contact with the, the engineer who put a cost estimate together for us. I've been speaking with a few contractors. The products that are listed to be used seem to be all available fairly quickly. So there shouldn't be any delivery issues. So we're, we're pretty good.
That was exactly my question. You're good with these numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Costin?
So the, the 100, I'm not a construction expert. I don't play one on TV. So the contingency, if that's not utilized, I assume that just doesn't get spent? And is then added to, added to? I, what happens to that?
It's returned.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Kathleen, can I ask a question?
Oh, of course. Sorry, Cody.
I, I just a question for Dan again. In one of our previous meetings, Dan, Dan can hear me, right?
He can.
Yes. In one of our previous meetings, I asked Dan if he, if he had a view on whether Julian Curtis or Central should be a higher priority. And I believe his answer, I don't want to get it wrong, it was recorded, so we can double check. But his answer was that he couldn't provide a view on that. I just wanted to see in light of recent events at Central, if, Dan, if you have a, a perspective on priorities as it relates to Central versus Julian Curtis.
Yeah, I think you better check the tape because I've always said Central was priority for me, even before the board prioritized things four years ago. So in an open, public forum, I, I definitely now would say Central without doubt needs to go first. Just because of the shape of the building, you know, it's not a, it's not a crumbling heap, as some people may see it. The building definitely needs help and I, I hope we move forward with it.
Great. No, thank you. That's helpful. I'm glad I asked. So we could clarify that. That's very helpful.
Yes, Karen.
So we currently have scaffolding up around the building and obviously that's going to stay until the work is done. Is there a line item here for the cost for that scaffolding on a rental basis? That my understanding is that there was a rental cost for that scaffolding to stay at like 25 to 35,000 dollars a month or something? Is that incorporated here?
In the top line, the trade labor and material costs.
Okay, so that includes the work that's going to be done plus the ongoing rental costs to keep the scaffolding up as the construction work is done to be able to remove that at some point, correct?
That's correct.
Anyone else? Did you want to, it's a good question, Karen. How many months does that assume then? If you don't mind me, in that, in the 607? Do you know, Dan? Sorry.
I believe it is a 60-day rental, so assume two months.
So if we're assuming two months, it was put in mid-February, that goes to mid-April. Is that long enough? Because.
The, the original cost was through June 30 for the rental of the equipment. The additional two months is figured in as well, but the original cost was through June 30.
So basically for the summer work, you have the extra 60 days. Got it?
Correct.
Yes, Karen.
So the expectation for this work would be to start it the day after school gets out. And I'm making that assumption. That's question one. And then if that's the case, then how long do we anticipate this work taking, how, how long this work will take place?
Assuming the paperwork isn't, is in place, meaning contracts, approvals, permits, we would start the day after school. If there's some preliminary work that we can start, we will do it sooner. But we're, we're looking at a 60-day cycle for the work. It probably be less than that, weather permitting, we should be very quick.
And then the next question I had was for Dr. Jones. And forgive me for not knowing this, but does this have any impact on any summer school activities that would otherwise happen at CMS over, over the course of the summer?
Yes, it does. The summer will be complex and figuring out our facilities, but we, we will get it figured out. CMS was supposed to host our summer school as well as we last summer had to share with Park and Rec for their programming, because the high school campus is also closed in the summer for soil. So I'm working with, matter of fact, just even today, we went back and forth with Park and Rec and we will find a solution with our other buildings.
So, yes, go ahead, Michael Joseph.
Yeah. So, so I think it's probably, that's a, missing something, which I think I am. The, maybe it would make sense to walk through. So it sounds like we, we did work over the last week to make sure that the building was safe. But there is more work that needs to be done this summer. Can you, we, Dan, could you explain what, you know, for the community? I think that's important to, to, to understand why the building's safe now, but there's still more that has to be done to keep it safe.
Look, I'll make it perfectly clear. We did no work. The only thing that was done was we put in sidewalk scaffolding like you'd see in New York in front of buildings. There was no remedial work done whatsoever. That work is, we should have those design plans in place by, I, I wanted them today. We're probably looking at Monday. It's going to go out for bid. We should have those numbers back within three to four weeks, at which point we'll go to a contract and we'll start day after school. But as of this point, there's been no work done on the buildings. Okay.
And can I ask, I, I assume there is a reason we don't want to do construction and I think I know the answer since, again.
Well, it's, it's very, it's, the process is going to be very noisy. Obviously, we don't want to do it when the kids are in school. We looked at doing after-school work. Unfortunately, with the noise ordinance in town, we wouldn't be able to get a full workday out of it. It would have prolonged the work, obviously prolonged the cost, overtime costs. With the school being safe and able to be occupied, it makes more sense to do it in the summer.
Makes sense to me. Any other questions on this particular item? Okay, so the motion on the table was to approve the interim funding for five-year repair solution at CMS in the amount of 940,000. All in favor? Mr. Kittle? Yes, that passes 8-0. Thank you. Dan, where do you think you're going? You're going to be right back up here. Okay, Ms. Downey, do you want to put another motion on the table? Or you want me to?
Okay, just give me a moment here. Okay. Going to make a motion that the board make a request for interim funding to create Central Middle School educational spec, specifications and conduct environmental testing in the amount of $150,000.
I'm happy to second that. Would you like to?
I think Dr. Jones is probably the best to speak to that.
I'm sure. So one thing that we have to have is our edspec that the Board of Education actually approves before we request the building committee to be put together from the first selectmen. And what this will allow us to do is to, we're trying to fast track, which I think everybody agrees with, and have a, a different approach right at the very beginning of the project. One of the things that the master plan did is to test fit. We did renderings, so we don't feel like, staff don't feel like we need to go and do that piece all over again. We would rather get our edspec together, which is based on the space that you need for a middle school. A lot of that is boilerplate. We know we need an auditorium. We know we need. Jim?
It's like the ghost of CMS folk. Keep going.
Want me to keep going? Oh goodness, okay. So at the very beginning, generally, we would, when we do feasibility, it takes a full year. We, we approve the feasibility money. We then form a feasibility committee. We go through and we create renderings. We go through and we create renderings. Again, they're just renderings. We get the ed spec and then the following year you come back and ask for the actual funding for the design. So what we're trying to do is cut off a year on this project and we feel very good about doing it in the sense that we do have test fit. We do have renderings. So we, we've looked at this property pretty extensively from that perspective, but we do need the ed spec. And one thing that we will make sure is when we're doing the ed spec, you know, we get input from the community. We get input from teachers. You meet with the PE department and the music department and, you know, what are the spaces that, that need to be in the building? And I will say, if you haven't looked in the master plan, if you look in there, it actually has the model program. It has our current program. You can actually see almost what you're going to get when you go and do an ed spec. It's pretty much the same thing. So it is that step, and I have to say, it's, I know, again, this has been confusing with the paperwork, but the mapping for that is, was on the back of the one you just looked at. Yeah. So this is a timeline. Again, it was on the one you looked at before this motion. And this timeline is just to help people understand, you know, how the process works. And if you actually look at the very beginning where it's red and you'll see for February and March, that's where we're trying to look at getting an aggressive, again, just the ed spec together so that down on the very bottom of that, you'll see the RFP, we can get that ready. We can start getting our building committee ready so that once the board, you know, has that ed spec approved, we can ask the first selectment also because it's, you know, he has to interview and go through the process to put the building committee together. Then the design money that you have asked for is right up at the top, which is number two, and you can see that it goes from, you know, left to right. You can see what's in green. And we need the design. Part of the design completed as well as things like a 10 year projection for enrollment in order to have what we need to submit to the state if we're going to get reimbursement for the project. So to do that by June of 22 is just impossible. We could not do that between now and June. So that means our target date we have to make is June of 23. So a full year, we feel like we'll be able to get what we need submitted and through that design process, which is what you see with the red, the big bar in the middle. And then you see the little star at the end. That's when we're going to submit it. And after that is submitted, the next thing that you'll see is in December, we then hopefully are on the priority list for the state. And then behind that, once we get approval, and there'll be work that's going on while we're waiting on the approval. The yellow to the right, I mean, you can't really see it. Oh, there you go. It's a 20 month construction. And once we get approval, that's when you put the shovel in the ground. And again, this is based on state requirement. So it's really a meshing, the Greenwich process, along with a state requirement so that we get reimbursement because it is, you know, a large project. And then once the building's constructed, the last thing you have is the demolition, which is the orange. So on this actual timeline, and I know some people are going to say this feels slow, but again, it's, it's the process we have to live with if we're getting reimbursement. It would open somewhere around, I'm just trying to read my chart. It's too tiny.
January.
January, I think.
2026.
Thank you. January of 26.
So can I, can I ask you a question? This does feel like the fact that this is us expediting it is kind of incredible to me. And that, you know, so I think about it. Admittedly, I have a fourth grader. So my fourth grader would would, I guess she'd be here eighth grade in January. Which is, that's remarkable, having said that. So I have to ask the question. The reimbursement rate is?
Well, interesting enough, as I was working on this, this afternoon with CSG, if it's totally built as new, it's probably going to be closer to 10 instead of 20. So I don't know if that would make a difference, but you're talking about millions of, you know, dollars you would be leaving on the table.
10%. So you're like talking like six to 12 million dollars is what we're looking at, basically. To excel, to, to add a year in theory.
Correct.
Okay, that made a lot of hands go up. I'm sorry, Laura, you were next, Costin.
So is there no way to proceed more quickly and then ask for reimbursement later?
No, no.
Just, I will tell you, just because we're doing it on the high school entryway project, it is a very precise prescribed process. There is no wiggle room. That if you have to, you know, if you have to put your application in, in June of 23 and wait till, you can't go out to bid until you get your state approval of your project.
What if they don't approve it? Or do they always approve it?
I mean, that's a good question. I mean,
I mean, are we waiting a year for, for money that may not materialize?
Well, I think, isn't that really a question for the BET and the RTM in terms of, like, we can approve the project, right? But we don't have to, you know, if they said we will fund the project, we don't care about state reimbursement. We're entitled to go full steam ahead, right? Or the building committee would then have the mandate to do that. But I don't think that's a decision we can make.
And I think it's also setting realistic expectations. You would be cutting off months, not a year or two. I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into building a school, so.
I'm just looking at the grant application process being quite, quite lengthy. I mean, a year. So that's, you know, is that six million? Is it 12 million? I don't know what that time.
But while you're waiting on that, there's still work that's taking place, you know, so they're still getting ready. I mean, there's a lot of work that's, that can still take place. And I'm happy to add more to this timeline if the board wants a little deeper dive, but, but it doesn't cut, it's not going to cut off a lot, a lot of time. So I just want to be realistic about that.
And just to your point, Laura, knowing there's a June, like, if you keep it on the state reimbursement track, then that's a June 23 deadline. So it keeps the A and E process moving quickly. Without that deadline, now seeing on my current building committee, things can drag out. So then you don't have kind of this, then maybe A and E doesn't get done till September. And so whether you actually save time, obviously no one really knows, but I don't think there's a guarantee of saving the time.
Mr. Kelly.
From what I understand, there's still some money owed from the state from when they built Old Greenwich School. So I think we have to consider that there is going to be payment in arrears. I'm joking about that because that was 120 years ago. But, uh, but, but.
I was like, Joe, I think you're a little confused.
But basically what we do in the BET and town has to be prepared for paying for it. And we have to then request what we're entitled to, make them aware of what we believe we're entitled to. And then we get reimbursed, given that we get reimbursed. So the bottom line is we have to have the money from the BET to do the project. And we'll explain to the BET, we expect to get this much. Make sure we do our, our procedures properly. And then we will then, after, or at some point, after we've already started, we will then get reimbursed. That's how I understand the process to work. Am I correct as far as you guys know?
Yes. And Sean, I know that you worked closely on the other reimbursement. Seems welcome to speak to that. That would be helpful.
So if I understood what you said, you're saying that you could proceed with BET funding and then, and then go with, go with the reimbursement later? Did I understand that?
That's the, the question I had asked, I believe, with New Lebanon. That's how they proceeded, no?
No, you'd, the BET would have to commit the funding before you even apply for a grant.
Correct. That's what I think I was saying, that we, we start the process, we pay for it, we get moving, and then we request the money from the state.
But I think you have to wait, you have to wait for the approval from the state before you actually start the construction. So there is a delay.
Yes, Karen.
Um, I think Dr. Jones, you said something about if we rebuild, it's, if we build new, it's 10, or if we do something, you said it's 20. Did I hear that right? And can you just explain that a little bit?
Yeah, it's right around 20%. If you were just coming in to renovate, but we would not recommend that we even attempt that with this building. It needs to be a new building if it's brand new. And I think they do that probably to try to encourage, you know, school districts to try to renovate buildings versus just knocking them down and building new. But we would not recommend that for this building.
Michael Joseph. Karen, oh, sorry. You were just advocating for her hand. Okay, got it. Karen.
So, and you know, Sean and or Dan, I know you guys have been involved in this for quite a few buildings within our district over the years. I know how long it can take to build a school and I know how quickly we can move when motivated and the needs are met. I saw the difference between Ham Ab and Glenville and the speed with which things were done. So I know, I know it can happen. But realistically, you know, if we are waiting for the state, you know, what, as Laura asked, I know the question becomes, is what kind of guarantee do we have that we will get reimbursed? You know, this does fall in line, I think, with what the state would reimburse for. But in your in the history of time, you guys have been involved. Have we ever been turned down when we've asked for reimbursement?
As, as a matter of fact, we've been turned down twice for the entryway project because the paperwork was not complete. I do believe once you have completed paperwork, it will get processed. So I don't believe that the risks are high that we would not get reimbursed.
You know, Christina.
Reminder that we submit the proper paperwork.
Just because your question, so the, my understanding is you have to be on this, you have to apply, you get on the state priority list, but to Laura's point, there's no guarantee that we get on that priority list. In which event, we were waiting and we don't get reimbursement, but I think that's a decision that has to be made. Like, is it worth waiting for X million of dollars? And I think, you know, we certainly talked about this in the budget committee meeting with our, you know, a number of our BET colleagues were at the meeting and had seen this timeline and are aware of the process.
Okay, so the, let me just get back to the question then quickly. You know, is there a possibility that we would have an indication from the state whether the likelihood is that we would land on that list? And if we land on that list, then the likelihood is if we don't mess up our paperwork and make sure our Ts are, you know, Is are dotted and our Ts are crossed, that it will go through. Because the question then is, is, you know, we, we've had other projects that we're sitting and waiting with, you know, bated breath for the state to get back to us and they haven't, and they haven't, and they haven't. And so I just don't want the students and staff of Central to be waiting like other schools have been waiting for fields, access roads, et cetera.
Absolutely. You know, I think if you look at the buildings, there's, you know, the likelihood that it could be slow, absolutely. That's just the way things unfortunately work through the governmental process. And if you look at, when we first started, Sean and I both, I know Leslie Moriarty and Leslie Targeting shared with us that we had some outstanding and then we had Glenville, you know, we had Ham Ab, we had Misa. And but once we actually processed that paperwork very quickly, they were, they were pretty fast to get those reimbursements. But it is an ongoing process because sometimes they'll deem things ineligible and you're going to want to kind of, you know, go back to them and ask for clarification. So it is a long process and they tend to do it in tranches instead of just giving you one big reimbursement.
I'll take some back. I'm happy to take some, even if it's not all, but some is good.
It's Downey.
Yeah, just like, for example, on New Lebanon, there were periods of time we had progress payments from the state along. But then there's, when the project finishes out, there's a final audit. And that process, I believe, takes it a year, could be two years, could be several years. So that last chunk of money, you typically are waiting for, for a while in terms of reimbursement.
I'm less worried about the time waiting for the full reimbursement than to get our, go ahead to start putting a shovel on the ground. Once we as a board have approved our ed specs and the, the other town bodies have approved the, you know, the whole process on our, on our end. That's all.
I think I just really need to appreciate, if we're talking $6 million, how much, what are you, how much time are you giving up? Because if it's a year, I think we're having a conversation. If it's a few months and that's what you're implying, maybe we're, we're focusing too much on something here that's not that important. Is that fair?
I would say that's fair. I think the timeline that we've set is realistic. And when we're waiting on that approval, there are, there's still a lot of things that we can be doing.
I also would like to point out, Joe, I don't know if you'll remember this, but we pulled the fields one time from our capital request because we said at maybe at one point we will be rebuilding Central. And I think it's important that we did that because it's likely we will be building the new building somewhere on the fields. So happy we, that was not a sum cost, if you will. Ms. Hirsch.
So I, I think that would be, that's actually a very good point that you just made, Kathleen, and, and I don't remember if it's under this or number or letter C. For the interim request, because I know you, Dr. Jones, had mentioned not doing the feasibility study, which is something we've done with many of our other schools. As she noted, there were some, a lot of detailed information that we would find in the master facility plan. And for many who haven't had access to see that, I don't know if you just want to just give a 10 second overview. I, I went, went back and read through everything. There are, you know, there are images, it very specifically, and I can read the language because I pulled it up, specifically stating that they did not recommend that we renovate this building, that it was very little worth a saving and it would be in our best interest to build a new facility and then it recommended locations. So I don't know if you want to, just because for some that may not have seen it.
Yeah, I think you captured it and they actually had the building kind of right behind this one. And Dan, feel free to chime in if you, if you want to speak to that, but where it would sit on, whether or not that works or not, that's one reason. And we've added in some of this environmental and you might want Dan to speak to what that environmental would be used for, because it is some soil work, but it's not the typical soil work we do in Greenwich.
So the, as far as where the placement of the school would be, I think that's, that's open to interpretation by whoever the design team is going to be. And I think KG and D, who did the master plan, felt it would be best to put it directly behind the school because there was some, there was some talk about, you know, you saving as much of the field as possible because fields are precious here in Greenwich. Everybody knows that we have a shortage of fields. That's why we were talking about turf fields or whatever. But as, as far as, I'm sorry, what was the, you wanted me to answer? It was the?
It's talking about the soil. A lot of people seem to think of polluted soil, but.
So we, we've done some preliminary studies on the field when we were looking at, are we going to put in a field? Are we going to put in a turf field? Is it going to be a hybrid field? That was, you know, bored of that banter two years ago. So there was some preliminary stuff. We're not going to have the same problem as we have at the high school. There's probably some contaminants, probably some natural contaminants, arsenic, whatever, that may have to be tested, may have to be removed. So we do need to do the testing. The other items we have to look at is drainage. Is the, is the field suitable to maintain a new building? And what part of the building, you know, can we put a parking lot out there? All those things will be answered when we do some kind of test. And you know, it's, it could, we could end up building a, a new building in the far corner. Maybe we, maybe we put it where in the other far corner or right next to the school. These are the kind of tests that will give us the best locations. And it'll also drive what type of construction it's going to be. You know, what kind of footings do you have to, you know, do we have to put the building on piles? Maybe, you know, maybe we go vertical, which to me, I think is the way to go. But I have little say in that design.
So just for clarification purposes, what we have from the master facility plan worked on by KG and D, the soil work that we had done when we were looking and had, we're approving the fields here is a good start, but we are saving a good $250,000 by not end time as well. By not doing the feasibility study, which is, is also a savings and trying to expedite the process. But we have pretty much what we would need to get ed specs done and find an appropriate location if we approve that funding.
I don't think the location is part of the ed spec. I think the ed spec is just the content of the building.
Right. But for the interim funding that we're asking for is for looking at
Correct.
Soil and placement as well as it's best.
Yes.
So we, everything else we have. Okay, thank you. That's all I was just trying to confirm.
Karen. So I guess mine is a follow on question to Karen's, which is how do we get the $150,000 number? My understanding from prior discussions is that we were, we could get ed specs for like $15,000, which I thought was a little on the light side for what that would cost. So I'm curious how we priced and how we came up with the number for 150 and think that that's suitable.
Go ahead.
You know, it's, it's not a, it's not an exact number. We have to put some kind of not to exceed numbers together. When we have engineers come out, we may have, we may find some spots where they're going to say it's absolutely not suitable to build a building in this location and we have to go to another spot. So we're going to end up doing quite a few holes out in that. doing quite a few holes out in that field. And it could, you know, we, we could find, we could find some issues, some environmental issues. So that's, it's just a really jumping off point. I think we're going to spend every dollar of it. But there's no, I don't have five different estimates to go by and it says we picked the highest one.
Okay, so we could be back here asking for more money then at some point.
For this particular item? I, I don't think so. I think, I think it's a pretty decent number. You know, I've talked to a few different environmental and a few different structural companies, got some ideas of what it would cost. But we haven't done anything yet.
Okay, so what?
So I, I've built in a little bit more on top of.
Understood. So the finished product that we would be getting for roughly the $150,000 is the Ed spec plus a preliminary assessment on where we could actually put a building based upon the soil testing we're doing.
That's a, that's a pretty broad stroke, but yeah, we're going to get information that will allow the professionals to say, this is the best place to go.
Okay, yeah, because I understood, I guess, from the, you know, architect and engineering component, I, I figured the engineering piece of that also included where best to place the building based upon the information we had.
We're going to, we're trying to jump ahead of that in, by providing the professionals with that information. So this is one of those time-saving initiatives.
Well, we do like time-saving initiatives.
Mr. Kelly?
Just to further elaborate on this point, with the, as we accelerate this process, we're eliminating some redundancies. We're making allowances for some of the redundancies which we had in the past in case we have to revisit those. So basically, if we do not have to do the redundancy, the waste that we've had in the past by taking an extra step that we might not have had to take, then this $150,000 will be considerably less.
We would hope. Yeah, correct.
Karen, so on the point of expediency, is there anything else we can do now that in, in order to help our A and E folks later?
My own opinion? I think, I think we need to, I mean, obviously this is a type of project that's going to need a building committee. And I, I think we really need to get the right people on the building committee to help us expedite things through, get people who have the expertise in certain things, legal, architectural, building department, representatives from the school, all have the same goal. I, I don't know if, how many of you have been on a building committee, but there's sometimes the building committees just don't, they don't jive. And you end up with meetings that don't amount to much. I think the building committee that's doing the, the entrances, they're, they're working well together. You're seeing some pitfalls that are happening. If we could maybe steal some of your people so we can work through some of those pitfalls, but it's, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, there's, there's some really good people who would really, I, I, I think enjoy doing this kind of thing. And this is going to be, this is going to be, I don't want to say like the crowning jewel of Greenwich, but this is going to be, you know, a big talk for the next couple of years, I think.
And, and you know, we're also reminded how well the New Lebanon Building Committee did, right? They came in on the budget on time.
I mean, you've got a beautiful, there was a beautiful building there. People work together. I, I think there was some issues in the very beginning, not with the building committee, but with the whole process. So it.
The state part, actually.
There's a learning curve there. So if that building committee can meet with the other building committees, that would be huge.
I think it's important that we.
There is a fair amount of over, there are a few overlaps from New Lab to the high school entryway. I'm not going to name.
I think we all do.
So that, that's, you know, and, and get an idea of where we can get the, where we can put the building, you know, get a strong enough building committee that can drive the architect. Every architect wants to put their own stink on thing, but, but if we've got, if you have an idea of what we want, let's put it down on paper. I, you know, I'm putting together some kind of standardization for some of the equipment and materials that we want in the buildings. That'll help me in the, you know, at the end that we have some, some parity across the district. We don't have any, if we put in the same type of air conditioning system we have in some of the other schools, there's no learning curve for the people in the building. All that stuff plays into it. If we know good products, tell the architect engineers, hey, we're using this. This is what we want. That's going to save time and money.
No, and I think you made a very good point, Dan. We, this is going to be a very special and hopefully wonderful school that we will have, well, for at least 100 years. And, um, you know, as a result, there should be a lot of community engagement on this topic because it'll be very important and something I know that we'll all be really proud of in the end, so. Anything else on this particular item? Okay, so do you want to, I think we all know the item on the table.
Did Cody want to ask?
Oh, sorry, Cody, did you have a question on this particular item or no?
No, I think we all know where all these central votes are going to land, so.
You never know, Cody. Okay.
Nothing else to hold us up.
So the motion on the table is to approve the request for interim funding to create CMS Ed specs and conduct environmental testing in the amount of 150,000. All in favor? That passes eight zero. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the other central item, but I just wanted to make a, a point of distinction now. So these two interim items will of course go to the BET next week for their approval. And I have to give my shout out to them. They have been really kind and are willing to meet and pivot quickly. And so the budget committee will be meeting at 10 o'clock on Monday. And then of course, the full BET will meet on Tuesday morning at nine o'clock to vote these. And at the same time, I of course was keeping up with the RTM and Alexis was quite accommodating too. She said that of course we could put our resolutions in tomorrow in order to make the call and that it would be subject to BET approval so that it would also be on their March call. So hopefully everything's lining up in terms of order and approvals. So now the next item we're going to talk about will only go to the BET because it's changed in 23 capital. Well, eventually it'll go to the RTM, but obviously it was part of the budget process. Okay, so Ms. Downey?
A do-over. Okay. That we modify our fiscal year 23 capital request to change had it all written down, the amount from CMS building envelope.
Christina, can I help?
Yes, please. I had it on a different piece of paper and I've been moving them all around. Thank you, Sean.
The, the, the motion is to modify the Board of Ed capital request for full year 23 as follows. Number one, in anticipation of approval of a current year interim for CMS Ed specs and environmental testing to reduce the requested full year 23 budget for CMS feasibility in the amount of 250, 250,000, reduce it to zero. Number two, to pull ahead the CMS design funds from full year 25 to full year 23 in the amount of 2.5 million dollars. And then number three, to offset the pull ahead of the 2.5 million dollars, reduce 2.5 million from the CMS masonry item in capital from 2.971 million to 471,000.
I'll second it. And no, but I don't think we want to take the 250.
I didn't think you did. That's not the motion you wanted to make. Sorry, Sean.
Sorry, Sean.
But I mean, that's what's, that's what's in the, in the cover sheet. So if you want to eliminate one of those, that's fine.
Do you want me to make the motion? I think I have it. Or Karen, do you have it?
Yeah, do you want to just do it with?
I can do it.
I guess here's my question is, do you want to do it with about pulling ahead from 25 to 23? I think it was too complicated. I'd rather do.
Go ahead, Christina. I think you got it.
I found, I found the piece of paper. I'm going to make a motion that we modify our fiscal year 23 capital request to move 2.5 million dollars out of Central Middle School building envelope masonry and change that amount instead to a request for architectural and engineering for Central Middle School.
Perfect. I'll second that.
Finally.
Discussion on this matter. Ms. Hirsch?
Sorry, I was just confirming so that I have the motion proper because.
Sean, I don't know if you want to talk about how changing for the number for Central Middle School building envelope masonry, the impact of that, just to, so that people are clear that it's now going to be 471,000. Are you or Dan, maybe?
The amount that's in there is 2,971,000 for CMS masonry for full year 23. We would be reducing that to 471,000, reduction of 2.5 million dollars. And that, and that 2.5 million dollars would move to, to, to CMS architectural and engineering.
And but that would still leave us some money for masonry work of 471,000 dollars to the extent we'd need to do any other minor issues in the building next year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can I ask a question? So it begs the question then, so we just, we don't need this additional two and a half million because we did a lot of the masonry work now. But that was only 740,000, or so if I'm remembering correctly. So are we somehow underfunding the entire masonry amount by doing this?
No, when we, when we did the initial review a couple of years ago, we, we had some preliminary drawings that showed a much more extensive replacement. Instead of drilling holes through the building and, and putting supports in, there were designs of removing the outside skin of the auditorium and the gymnasium, putting in car, carbon fiber supports. It, pretty extensive. Those drawings, we only went to about 40% and then we started looking at the crack monitoring. And that's where we're at today is that the, the design of the, I don't want to call them temporary repairs, but the repairs that we are going to undertake this summer are not as extensive.
Five year, like you say, it's because it's in a five-year emergency plan, if you will. Okay, Ms. Downey?
And I, and I think, I think I said it earlier, but in the conglue, that basically what this means is our capital request for fiscal year 23 vis a vis Central Middle School is the exact same dollar amount. They're just two different line items, a smaller amount for masonry and the architectural and engineering, which amount to the same amount that was requested before.
Any other questions on this matter? Okay, and I think we got the motion right. I'm not going to repeat it. So seeing no other questions, I'm calling this to a vote. All in favor? Cody? Yes, okay, eight zero. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes Central. And again, this will also be discussed with the BET. This is not something that goes to the RTM yet because it's just a change in budget and so then it'll be rolled up in their consolidation process. Okay, next up, can I get a motion from anyone on the new courses? Ms. Hirsch?
To get this on the table, I move that we approve the two new courses at G, GHS as presented.
Happy to second that. Okay, discussion? Ms. Hirsch?
I had a quick question. I don't know if Dr. Carabillo is, is on, but one of the things that I noted as being offered as part of this course is an honors option, but there's really no mention as to what that entails. Do you have details on that?
Sorry, I do not have any details on that, but that would be the work that we would do during the summer to make sure that we have that option in there.
At honors class for, honors for what?
Well, actually, both of them have honors list, honors options listed.
Oh, I'm, I didn't realize that the African-American one did as well, but that would be the work that we would do this summer to see where it would be accelerated.
So to confirm for both courses.
The work would have to be this summer, but I did not want the teachers to do additional work until it was approved.
Okay, the second one is an honors course. The first course, American Studies offers an honors option.
Right, yes. It's getting a little late for me. That's why, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hirsch? Sorry, Ms. Kloski.
Sure, so my questions pertain to the Black and Latino Studies class, and I've gone through this fairly extensively. Look, and I think overall, I think it's a great course. It's a great elective. We heard from a student tonight that's looking forward to taking it and contrary to comments tonight, I, I too am looking forward to taking this class. I, I hope it's earlier in the morning for scheduling purposes, but whenever it is, I'm happy to attend. The question I have though is, and this still remains unclear to me as to why we need to take the curriculum that was put forward by CERC as, as it's written. I've looked at the statute. I understand that it is a requirement that this class is offered for the next year and that's clear as day. What I don't see in this statute and what I, is that we are required to take the curriculum that they've provided, which is, you know, a fairly detailed day by day, course by course, without having gone through our own curriculum committee. And that's unclear to me as to why we're just accepting this rather than it going through our own curriculum committee as required by our policies.
All of the activities that are in this particular course are just recommended activities. They are not required activities and teachers always have the opportunity to take a look at what is being recommended and then use from that recommendation what they feel is most appropriate for those students in front of them. It is used as a guide and the CERC, the people that worked on it at CERC are all educators or administrators and administrators are educators as well. And all of the materials, which I think is really important, have been vetted. And all of the information is correct. So I think that it's a really good curriculum to look at, to really try it out for the first year. And then as we see that we need to maybe move things around, but it's built to build upon one another as what students are learning each next chapter or whatever it is that we're following. Each section builds upon what the students have currently learned or learned previously. So that it really is, is a very good project that was done.
Look, no disagreement on some of what you said, but I think last time that we met, the understanding I had, I think what we were told is that this actually couldn't be changed. And what I'm hearing tonight is it can be changed. It's a guide. It's a guide post for which we can use. And so it goes back to my original question, which is we have policies and procedures in place as to how curriculum is to be vetted and it should be gone through the curriculum committee. And they should vet it and then it come, they vote on it and then it comes to the board and we haven't undertaken that process here. So my concern is, one, why we haven't done that and two, why aren't we doing that?
The teachers at the high school have looked at it and they have, they do think that it is an appropriate course. They are going to be receiving some training in April and in the summer. And if there are changes that they really believe need to be made, I'm sure that that will be appropriate for them to make those changes. And if there are changes that they really believe need to be made, I'm sure that that will be appropriate for them to make those changes.
But wouldn't that, that would be a curriculum change that is within the board's policy? It has to come to the board to make that change.
And the curriculum has been, been presented to you as presented and this is your opportunity to share with us what your opinions are and then you have an opportunity to vote on that.
It is overall, look, I think there are, there's a lot of great content in this class and I don't disagree with, with most of it. I don't disagree really with, with any of it. I just, I think that there is some strong political ideology in this, in certain of the, I don't know what you call blocks that are being provided that falls outside of what, you know, the Greenwich Schools are teaching and for that matter, what we've set approved as a board is the proper curriculum for our students. And so I have, I have concerns in that regard and I have concerns that it just, this hasn't gone through the process of the curriculum committee. It hasn't been brought to the curriculum committee, which is pursuant to our policy. We are a policy driven board that follows process and we're not following process here and that's my concern. And if we don't follow process here, where else are we not going to follow process? And I think it's a bad precedent for this board to go outside of our procedure in approving something, which is why we have a curriculum committee.
I will have a conversation with Dr. Jones to see if there is a way that we can formalize that process that the teachers held at the high school on this course and see what we can bring back to you.
Look, and I understand that we need to put this into the course handbook. And if I recall from our last meeting, the concern was to have it approved before it goes into the course handbook. I have no problem putting this course in the course handbook and making a vote tonight and modifying the motion to say, subject to the curriculum, going through the curriculum committee and coming to the board for a vote in that matter, following our process and procedures as have been outlined and been in place for quite some time. So I have no problem doing that. I think we are a process driven board and we need to follow our process. Otherwise, I don't know why we have so many policies in place and why I currently sit on the policy committee and spend needless hours reading and modifying and making sure that we're doing the right thing if we're not going to follow our policies.
Michael Joseph.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important. I'll just speak for me, the, but I think it's important that it's clear that I'm certainly not saying, and I know Karen isn't either, but I'm certainly not saying that a Black and Latino history course isn't important to offer. Absolutely, it's important. The, I think what we need to recognize here is that this is coming to the board in a set of very unusual circumstances, right? This is the state legislation. The state has mandated this course. Okay. Then the state has created this curriculum. Sounds like a lot of very thoughtful people spent a lot of time, 10 committees, according to the report, spent a lot of time drafting the curriculum. By that very nature of the process, there's a lot in the curriculum. That has, that makes the curriculum, the curriculum guide, and I hear what, what Dr. Carabelle is saying about it being a guide, a little problematic in certain aspects. One is the breadth of the curriculum. I'll just give you an example. The, in, if you read through the whole document, in September, there are two units in the month of September. There are eight learning objectives and there are 37 big ideas. That's, that's very hard to cover in any kind of thoughtful matter. I looked through the scope and sequence over the course of the 10 months and I didn't see time in there for review. I didn't see actual time in there for assessments because the curriculum is so jam packed. By its very nature, that guide, teachers are going to have to make thoughtful decisions about what to include and what not to include. Secondly, there are aspects of, there are some of those lessons on each, on different, different individual lessons that cover controversial topics. Great. I'm all for teaching of controversial topics. They, we need to teach our students how to look at different sides of an issue and develop their own opinion of it. It is unclear the way some of those topics are structured in a lesson that different sides of the controversial topic are presented in a way for students to make up their own mind. Case in point, on the Columbus lessons, the evidence of learning is to write a op ed onto why Columbus Day should be retitled Indigenous Peoples' Day. Maybe that is true. They, that's not our, that's, that's not the purveyor of the board nor, but I know there are a lot of people in the community have different opinions on that and all the more appropriate that the curriculum supports students developing their own mind about that and looking at the evidence. For both of those, for those reasons, because of the breadth of the curriculum and because I think it's, we need to make, make certain that we're supporting students in developing their own minds about controversial issues of controversy where there's a diversity of opinion. They, while teaching this very important subject, I think it's important that we take this guide, just like we would any other subject, any other course, and develop our own curriculum documents. Case in point, for example, can, think of this as a less controversial issue, geometry class. We have a geometry course. We have state standards that the geometry course should be teaching towards. They, we have a geometry textbook that forms the guide for that course. We then develop curriculum documents to, to adapt that curriculum in teaching to the standards so that's appropriate for our students and our here at Greenwich. I think it's the same thing here. The, we have a course that buys the state statute. We should be teaching and it's important, of course, that we should be teaching towards these state standards. We have a guide that the state has given us to support the teaching of the standards. We now then must adopt that guide to the specific context of our, of our students to support the teaching of those standards. I think that's a very reasonable thing and I think it would have happened in any other situation. The way it has in here is because you have this on high curriculum by legislation. That's, that's, that's developed. And I think now it's time to take the reins and make sure that the actual curriculum that we're approving is appropriate for, for our students and, and teachable.
So can I, okay, go ahead, Ann.
No, I'm just shaking my head. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to take a little bit of a step back. I mean, first of all, I, processes sometimes used when we're not comfortable with a subject. So, but I'm going to sort of, and so that's, that's my first point. But I have to say that I, this is something that's mandated by the state, but it's something that I think is wonderful that's being offered in our public school system. I also appreciate that they're offering it as an elective. So I think that's very important to remember. This is not one of our required courses. If this is not something a parent is comfortable with their child taking, I for one would be. I think it's important to learn about this, other cultures, other perspectives. But it's not something that you are forced to take, like, like Global Studies, for example, that my son was taking today. And I thought, we need to be reminded that we approve the concepts of curriculum. We don't approve daily lesson plans. I don't think that's the job of a board. And I think teachers are professionals who take a guide. They're not robots and they pivot. And so, for example, and this is why I'm bringing up Global Studies today. They were covering the Berlin Wall coming down. But guess what this wonderful teacher did today? He talked about Russia invading the Ukraine. And that was relevant. I think it was important to pivot. It wasn't a part of his lesson plan. But guess what? It is a part of Global Studies. And so I think this is something I know. I, I understand the process point and maybe that's something we should be working on. Not just as it relates, I hope, to Black and Latino Studies, but also as it relates to this biology course that we're also approving. But I don't want to get lost in sort of form over substance here. And I think that this is an important course that I know I will, will want to approve tonight so that it goes into the course of the study guide for Greenwich High School.
So just, just following, thank you, just following up on that point. It's something that Dr. Jones said earlier with respect to the process in the biology class. This was something that the teachers were going to work on with respect to the curriculum over the course of the summer. We don't have it yet and we're simply approving the course going into the course book, but that we would follow the process, that the teachers would look to build the curriculum. It would go through the curriculum committee and come back to us. So we're following the process in one regard, but not in the other. And I think that, look, I agree that teachers are not robots. Teachers are magical and perfect and wonderful human beings that do God's work. We know that. And I think here it is not the content of the, of the subject matter with respect to process. That's not why we're, we're, we're here. And obviously I think this is a, is a perfectly wonderful class. It provides a lot of great information that I think we do, our students do need to learn. I myself am looking forward to learning it next year, but I think here we need to understand how this is going to play out. And like I said, happy to put it in the course book for next year, just like the biology class. But again, I, you know, we, we talk about being a process and procedurally and policy driven board. And I think that we either need to practice that or not.
Kathleen, or can I just put my hand in, in the queue for talking?
Yeah, I don't know if Dr. Marcus is on. I don't see him, but I could be wrong. I think Kathleen made a, a good point. I had actually asked Mike to, to make a similar one. There, no, no, there's a vast difference and I think it's, it's, it's something that most people, and I'm not suggesting necessarily members of the board or, or the community are missing, you know, misinterpreting understanding. But there's a vast difference in an understanding when we say the word curriculum, right? And so parents often, you know, use that, not, not every parent, clearly I'm not making a judgment here, but many use that term to encompass the entire discussion as to what our students are learning every day when they walk into that classroom. And the curriculum is sort of the overview, right? The, the bones of a, of a course and the daily lesson plans are something that support those bones. And what we are being asked to approve as a board are the bones, not the daily lessons plans, not the materials that are necessarily given on every given day to our students. That is in the weeds. That is not something that we as a board are supposed to be doing. We're not the educators. So the one question we have is whether the bones are, are proper, whether the, the sequencing and the timing, which is what Mike was getting at when he looked also into this. And look, I will simply say, I, I fully support offering this course to our students. We really need to ensure we offer courses that are reflective of our students' interests, their experiences, their histories that allow them to fulfill the vision of the graduate. It's what we're talking about. Pursuing unique interests, passions, curiosities, recognizing and respecting other cultural contexts. I think that's what this course is, is, is here to do. And it's important we give them materials that allow them to critically interpret, evaluate and synthesize the information and explore, define and solve complex problems. That being said, I, I also don't necessarily see something wrong with asking the curriculum committee to, to sort of review the sequencing, just to ensure the course meets our standards of rigor. Make sure it's as robust as our other course offerings and making sure the pace and sequencing is aligned with other courses. Just so that our students have the opportunity to really delve in and deeper into areas of interest and ensure it fits with our block schedule. I think that that's, that's something that we, we can ask, but you know, again, you know, I, I think it's just important for people to understand that it's a vast difference between the overarching curriculum and daily lesson plans, materials and all the other things that go, go into, go into that. And I don't know if Dr. Carabilla wants to, to give a brief, if, if I'm in the right ballpark there on that.
You are definitely in the right ballpark. The curriculum is built upon the standards that are expected that we want our children to be able to demonstrate and, and be able to incorporate in their everyday lives and build upon those particular standards. So you are absolutely correct. And when I looked at it, when I first looked at it, I thought, oh, there's no way that we can follow that scope and sequence. So we're going to have to make choices. But I think we have to give the teachers an opportunity first to really take a deep dive into it. There are a number of schools that have been piloting this this year and they have been giving a lot of feedback to the state and to the people that wrote the curriculum and they are going to be getting together at the end of the year. They have been putting in comments all year and what has been successful and what has not. So I'm sure that they will be able to share information with us so we can make the adjustments where we feel that would be necessary. So as we all know, the, the guaranteed curriculum to cover all the standards is what we have. That's how we build what we are going to actually expect children to know and be able to demonstrate. But the way we teach it is where we really look at who those students are in front of us and what is appropriate for them. And we have a very diverse group of learners in our classes and we really want to be able to meet each one at, at where they are and move them forward. One of the things that I really thought was particularly impressive about this particular way that the, the courses were set up is that they're all built upon the UDL principles. And our teachers have just gone through a year of professional year learning. And this is a way for them to see how those principles have been implemented and included into some of the activities that have been recommended. So I think that that's going to be a real plus for our teachers who teach this. And I don't know how many teachers will be teaching it because they have to volunteer for it. They have to do a lot of work to learn about the curriculum and the standards that are expected to be taught. So I think that you are right on, Mrs. Hirsch, and thank you.
So just the last statement is just that there may be changes that are, because people have piloted this program already this year, that we may find that there are some things that are being removed and updated, correct?
Okay, Mr. Kettle.
I, I have some comments, but I just, I'm not sure I fully understand something. When I look at this curriculum file, there's this page that has learning objectives and essential questions. I'm, I'm guessing that's probably close to when we talk about the standards and the overall mission of the class. I like, I, I'd imagine that no matter what, we have to adhere to that. But is, is what you're saying that our teachers could, or actually let me ask it this way. Is it correct that our teachers could look at, look at those learning objectives and essential questions and say, we can address it our own way and come up with their own curriculum to do that? And ignore the scope and sequence that's laid out in the cert, the 300 page cert file? Or do they actually, like, when you open the cert file and it says, you know, early, mid-September, like this is what you're studying, two and a half weeks, 12 days, you know, this unit, like, do they have to follow? What, where is it that they, what do they have to follow? And what do they have option and optionality and control over?
It's not followed rigidly because of the students that you have in front of your classroom. We have a scope and sequence in most every, it's really a pacing guide. And what we would expect to be able to cover within a certain period of time, a certain unit in a certain period of time. But there are many teachers that maybe they have a class where they really have a great understanding and they can demonstrate it in a much shorter period of time, so they can accelerate and go on to the next unit. So it's not you have to do every single day and follow what they have. It's a recommendation. It's an estimate about how long it will take to teach that particular unit. And then you've got some resources, which another really good thing about this is the resources have all been vetted to make sure that they are age appropriate for the students that would be taking the course. So I think that's.
So if, if I were a teacher, would I have the ability to say, I think I could cover all of these subjects by going super in-depth on, you know, the writings of Frederick Douglass and we're only going to study that? And I'm going to cover all these concepts and ideas. And we're only going to study that, and I'm going to cover all these concepts and ideas doing that?
That I
Using that as an example, would you be allowed to do that? Or you?
No, no, because you have a supervisor that would make sure that you're supporting one another. You have other teachers that you're teaching the same course with, and you get together. You have your professional learning communities, and you talk about what has worked, how the students are doing. You look at what they're doing as they are able to demonstrate their understanding, and you make those decisions together. It's not an individual one. But if you don't want
But just in terms of the mandate from Hartford, that's what I, if if that
The course is a mandate, yes.
I got the course as a mandate, if that group of teachers
And this is a guideline, and we're going to use the guideline to make sure that we are in adherence to what we've been required to do by the state.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to get at, is what are we required to do by the state? If that
We are required, we are required to offer the course as an elective. And this is the guide for the course, the two courses that we will be teaching.
And the guide is not limited to the objectives or the standards or the questions you have to
The guide is, right, the guide is limited to make sure that we're covering all of the standards that are included in the courses.
Including the schedule and the order, which I get that you might have a day where you're ahead or behind, but
It's a guide.
To follow.
It's a guide. And it's it's, it was presented so that it would spiral on the students' learning experiences as they're taking the course.
I guess I still keep having trouble, there's a, there's a mandate, right? And so you can't veer off
The course as an elective to all students in high school.
Yeah, the, you can keep saying it's elective, that doesn't relate to my question. The, 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 I'm trying to understand how boxed in are teachers? How much freedom do they have to decide how they want to address these subjects and teach them?
That's the art, that's the art of teaching. They've been given a a variety of resources. They know what standards go to build upon that particular course and what those standards are looking for. And they have
Let me ask it a different way.
The opportunity to do that.
If I'm a teacher
I guess I'm having trouble understanding your question, Cody, I'm sorry.
Am I allowed, if I'm a teacher, to skip Unit Four, Long, Long History for Equality, which is covered in a 14-day period in late October to mid-November? Can I say, you know what, Unit Three and Unit Five are so much more pressing, we're going to skip Unit Four? Am I allowed to do that?
I would have to look at the standards and see if the standards are covered in another place. I can't answer that question for you, Cody. I'd have to look at the standards and see what actually is being covered in those particular units and concepts.
Okay. I don't know of other, I just, what's confusing to me is, I I think one of the, one of the challenges with this concept is that we are teaching by, you know, I think someone on, someone in this meeting said, from a curriculum standpoint, it doesn't really make sense for the board to design day-by-day curriculum lesson plans. I would, I would extend that to the idea that it doesn't make sense for politicians in Hartford to kind of mandate day-by-day plans. And I know, and you're going to say that this is all designed by experts, but it's still a political process. I'm just, I I'm still confused on what's required and what isn't. But maybe just to pivot to some of the other comments I wanted to just address really quickly. I've heard a number of people say that they think it's important to learn about other cultures or perspectives or stuff like that, as if anyone is opposed to those ideas. I think everybody is, I I have, I've not met or heard of any parent or anyone say that they're against learning about slavery, learning about other cultures. I've never heard anyone object to the many classes that we have at the high school that cover those ranges of subjects. I think it's really important when we discuss something like this to not create straw men. I think Mike made some really interesting points on this class and why some of the, some aspects of it are problematic and probably should go under further review with the curriculum committee or whatever. It sounds like, I mean, I think that's a very reasonable approach. I just would point out that, you know, I saw there's a letter in the Greenwich Free Press, parents saying, oh, you know, people that don't want to teach this, it's because they don't want to address whiteness or white supremacy. That's, the real question here is, we have a class being forced on us by politicians in Hartford that have different incentives than people who are focused on ensuring kids get quality education. And if something is, you know, pushed pushed down from the top like that, you run the risk of it, the quality of the education being compromised. And I think there's, Mike made a number of good arguments around that. I would just point out also that, you know, I have some concerns on how this would be taught, and I would much prefer to have greater flexibility for the teachers to actually design the curriculum. But just in terms of the political aspect of it, there are things that are troubling in the 300-page document. I'm not sure how many of the parents who spoke at this, spoke tonight about this have actually bothered to even scratch the surface of it. But I'll just use two examples that I found, which weren't even hard to dig up. There's a, one of the lesson plans asked the question, is reform of inequitable systems enough? And it, I just, that stuck out to me because it's, you're not saying, hey, let's evaluate whether the systems in the US are inequitable. It presupposes that, and then just says, is reform enough? And that's, I had great teachers at Greenwich High School, like Mr. Epstein, who wouldn't have a lot of similar political views to me, but he always started the questions very broad, so you could explore everything. There's another one, how how will, this is asking students, how will they dismantle, but more importantly, rebuild outside of the Eurocentric model? It's like questions like this that I think parents in the, in the community hear, and they go, is that teaching critical thinking? Or is that teaching some, something with a lot of political assumptions built in? And again, it's not that there's any right or wrong answer. It's that you want to expose the kids to a broad, a broad set of viewpoints and be able to debate it and not teach them something that, actually, there are intelligent debates about, is is orthodoxy. So I know I've been talking for a while, I apologize, but I do have concerns over this. And, you know, I think, and I just want to encourage everyone one more time to really address what the debates are versus these straw man discussions, as if anyone is opposed to, you know, having interesting classes about the experiences of different groups of Americans or other people.
Thanks, Cody. Um, Anne, question for you. I know that you talked about all the educators that does, that design this, but I can understand the point. Have Greenwich educators looked at this? Because we, of course, pride ourselves on doing things hopefully better than others. So have, and I, having, you know, the high school is incredible. So have our Greenwich High School global
There was no one from Greenwich that was on the committee, other than our former Chief Academic Officer, Irene Perici. But I know that there have been some teachers that have been following some of the work that has been done because the, the, I'm kind of forget what her name, the commissioner has sent out various updates on what's been happening in her superintendent reports or commissioner reports monthly. And she has been sending out updates as to where they are and what their work, work times are. They've had work groups, and people were able to join those work groups if they wanted to. But I am not aware of any of our Greenwich history teachers participated in that, in any of those work groups or not.
Dr. Jones, I think you missed my question a little bit.
Anne, I think there's, I think she was asking, have our teachers looked at this and weighed in on it for Greenwich High School? We know they weren't on the state committee.
Some of our teachers have looked at it, and I don't know what their comments are, but I know that Lucy is very excited about it. And she said, some of her staff that have looked at it really think it's great. They had a number of teachers working on the presentation of what the course would look like and what the, what the concepts would be and what the standards were, and they they thought that it was good.
Ms. Downey.
Kind of if you're talking about, like, they're looking at it, in terms of offering an honors option, how does that get determined? I mean, that's not teacher-specific, isn't it? It's that the, the group of teachers who will be teaching it will look at criteria and anything for an honors option? I don't know if you can, I know you said it'd get looked at. Could you talk about that just for a moment?
It would, the teachers would have to make a determination if they could have students, they, at the high school, they have students that can take a course, and it can become an honors course if they have a conversation with the teacher, that they would like to go deeper into certain areas and have, you know, have have it be a little bit more rigorous than what the course is offering. I know that they offer that in a number of courses. So what they would have to do is to look at that and say, all right, if we have a lot of students who want to do that, would it make more sense to have a separate course as an honors course? Or can we have the students in our class at the same time who want to take the honors and just have them do some additional, whether it be a presentation or research paper or something like that, which is what they've done in some of their other courses that they offer as a regular course or an honors course, but you're in the same classroom?
But it, like, let's just say you have three sections of it with three different teachers. Is the, is the honors, non-honors distinction standardized across those, or is it teacher-specific?
I would have to get back to you on that, because I've just started to really delve into that, especially with the, some of the courses that have been offered. I'm really learning as to how they make that determination. So I could get back to you on that, Christine.
I think we'd find that helpful information. That would be much appreciated, thank you.
Ms. Kowalski.
So
No, no, go ahead, Michael Joseph.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing, I'm hearing a few things which I think, think are noteworthy. So the, this is a guide from the state, the state. It's been piloted, the state's going to revise it, continue to revise it based on feedback. We're looking at an honors section. I think for all these reasons, I'm not clear what we're approving. The, why not? We have to have, I think, I think this can, I think I'm hearing consensus that we should have something in the course catalog as far as a course that teaches the standards, a course on Black and Latino history that teaches the state standards. I think it sounds like what still needs to happen is we need to develop, we need to have our people develop an appropriate scope and sequence that uses the guide, that might have an honors track, that might have, might have a non-honors track, that thoughtfully, especially since the state, if the state document is even in draft, all the more reason why I think we need to have our own curriculum here. They, that's not clear that we're, it's clear what we're, what we're voting on. I think it might seem, might just be reasonable for all the reasons, including the the vastness of the, of what's in the guide, that we have our people develop a more, adopt a more thoughtful scope and sequence, which it sounds like they're going to do anyway. So why not have that done? Bring it to the curriculum committee, and then we approve on that, as opposed to approving this piloted, revised, well, we're not going to teach all of it, guide that that is currently for us. It's no fault of, no fault of you, Dr. Carabilla, it's what we got from from the state. They, that sounds like a reasonable approach to me.
Can I just add one to that? And I'm just, I'm thinking in the moment here. I remember a few years ago, sitting at a board meeting, and the computer programming class beyond AP was added. And I remember the questions we had around that were really interesting, like, wow, we have students going beyond AP computer programming. But we didn't go into the detail, and I have a technology background, and we did not go into the detail of all aspects of how we were going to be teaching that new course, which was above and beyond probably many of our understanding. And it was going beyond AP, so it wasn't prescripted. Like, you know, you could argue that biology class is probably prescribed because we're offering this biology class because AP bio went away, and this was a whole, right? That was something completely new. I just, I'm a little bit worried that we're creating a slippery slope here. I, because of the content of this particular course, and that's, I'm not trying to be political. I'm just, I'm just, I I think that it's more of a precedent-setting moment than you might think. I'm, I think we should call the vote unless you guys have something else. And we could say, let's, let's hear more about this at the end of the year or something, as it comes to agenda planning or something along those lines, as maybe something that gets us all comfortable. But, sorry, Joe had a question, and so did Karen.
Well, I'm sorry, I haven't spoken on the topic yet. I guess mine is a more basic, simple approach to this, that this is African-American, Black, Puerto Rican, Latino studies. Just in the title in itself tells you it's a little bit sensitive, more than maybe a computer program that we're looking at. So there's a degree of sensitivity here, and I think everyone, not out of fear of being labeled, because I know most of you guys, and there's no racists on this board here, everyone's a, open-minded and and want to do good things for the world. That's why we volunteered to to work on this board. So basically, I think what everybody's saying, just trying to summarize now, is that we all sort of agree that, well, we have to teach this class or a class like this, that's a fact. We all agree that there's a lot of very good things about this, this course. And I can't think that further scrutinizing or for further analyzing this has has any harm. Is there any, any time sensitivity here, Dr. Jones, that we have to approach, that we can't take a little time? Is there, what's the time sensitivity?
Has to go on the course of study guide, kids are already signing up for it.
And how soon is that?
Now, I know my kids are signing
It is already in the course of study guide if you go on the web, the Greenwich High School website.
Well, they could pull it, obviously, if we didn't approve it. And courses aren't finalized until March 21st or something. I know it's like the last day they commit with their guidance counselor, so. Oh, sorry, Mark had something to say, keep going, Joe, and then we'll go to Mark.
Please, so, Mike, I've teased you about this a little bit. When you were, when you were running, you said you, we should not be jumping from crisis to crisis. As we jump from crisis to crisis, you, we're now, here we are again. You're telling us our backs are against the wall, and we have to make a decision. But there is some, in a sensitive topic where we have opinions on both sides, we're not getting to really understand the specifics that might infuriate some of our citizens, some of our constituents, without taking a full look at at these issues. That worries me. Basically, we should be able to have enough time to to take a good look at these topics, especially the sensitive ones, because we're here to reflect the opinion of our entire community, not just our opinions, but everybody. So it worries me that we're, we're forced to take a vote when people in our community and people on the board here want to look at it a little further. So I'm kind of stuck there, where it worries me, the fact that we're, we're kind of forced into an issue. Can somebody give me an out here where we can spend a little more time looking at this without being forced to make a vote immediately?
Karen, and then I had a response to Joe, but go ahead, Karen.
Sure, I also had a response. I have a suggestion, and the suggestion is, it is really very simple. It's pass these two courses for being put into the course handbook, which sticks with both what we need to do from a time perspective and in compliance with the state requirement that we need to teach this class. And no one on this board has said anything that we don't want to teach this class. Every person on this board who spoke tonight has said, we want to teach this class. The question then becomes, what do we do to solve the issue that we're facing, which is the the process component and making sure that this is properly vetted? And I would point to the text of our policy 6161 that says, "Any textbook or learning material that will serve the function of a textbook, hard copy or digital, must be processed through all the capital letters, the District Curriculum Committee, following the district regulations concerning adoption of textbooks informally adopted by the Board of Education." So I would suggest that we revise the motion to simply say the to, the proposal for the new course pilot or programs be put into the course handbook, subject to further revisions and review put forward through the District Curriculum Committee pursuant to policy 6161.
You have to amend the motion, so.
May I
You have to make a formal amendment to the motion.
Let's keep it in discussion mode. Does anyone have a problem with what Karen just had said? I mean, we okay with amending, let's
I need to hear the motion, that's why we have to follow proper course. You have to actually make the motion, you have to get a second to it, then you have to amend the motion, then we have to come back and vote on it.
Okay, so I move to amend the motion on the table that and the amendment is the proposal for the new course pilot course or new program for the African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies. What's the other one? And the biology class. And the biology class be approved for posting in the G GPS course handbook. Subject to further review and revision. Through through the district curriculum committee pursuant to policy six one six one.
You have to get a second. Okay. So now is discussion on this particular amendment. I I'm just, I I think I'm generally there. What I want to point out, though, is that. Is again, you're going to probably have to go back and look. If you're putting this, just know you're setting a precedent for other things. Maybe we have to go back and look at. The computer program.
I think this is a different situation. I think when we create a course.
Well, then bio shouldn't be a part of it.
Maybe, I, yeah, I'm not sure biology should be a part of it, so they can amend the amend the amendment. But when we create a course, it's a little different, right? That we're our curriculum. Committee is probably already doing that work in the process of creating the course. Unlike a course which is. Given to us, you know, on a silver platter with everything, all the materials and so I think there is, it's different because of that, not because of the content. To be honest.
Is that correct, Dr. Jones? So that that is right. So in theory. The biology class course went through the curriculum committee and this did not. Let me make it that simple.
Yeah, Dr. Cara Billa would have to answer that, but I really think we're. We're confusing when you're talking about curriculum and I certainly could go back and look at the regulation. You know, maybe we've got a really old regulation or something, but we couldn't bring every single curriculum when we're talking about the actual curriculum. You know, to the board and teachers always have flexibility. And in what makes this one unique is it's also an elective course. So it's not like we have state standards that we have to offer the course. They've given us guidance, but it's not like we have an assessment at the end where our students have to meet a certain standard, which is very different than. And what we have like with an advanced placement course or you think about our S back testing and Mark, Mark, feel free to chime in. I know you wanted to say something, I think, just about curriculum.
Sure, I'm happy to, you know, just to take a step back. In its most general sense, curriculum means it's a course of study. But then you get into the more explicit curriculum, which is an individual teacher's curriculum. So for example, that includes the specific learning standards. The lessons, the assignments, materials used to organize and teach a particular course. It also includes the pacing guide. I think Cody mentioned that earlier. You know, you you have to talk about. Scope and sequence. You have to talk about the general understanding of what will be covered, the essential questions. And and how that aligns to the standards that are that we are required as educators to cover. But when you dig deeper into the actual lessons that teachers create. I don't know necessarily that's the purview of what the board. Should be approving, because again, if you take a look at a textbook, for example. If you're, if you're asking the board to approve a textbook, you're approving it in its entirety. You're not taking certain chapters out of the textbook and saying, we're going to exclude those for instructional purposes. So it really is, you know, taking a step back and understanding from a real general sense, what does the word curriculum mean? And it's a course of study, but when you get specific into what it means for a teacher, it's much more dynamic and explicit.
So, Michael Joseph.
I I I hear you. I think, and I, that's, that's a, that's a valid point. I think that's part of the. What where this is a little problematic, because, you know, to take the geometry example, right? We'd be adopting the geometry. Textbook is a guide. In this point, at this point, what we're being asked to is we're we're being asked to adopt. The the state document as a guide and the state document specifies this, you know, very specific lesson by lesson. And I think that's the challenge. I agree. I don't think that it is, it is appropriate, you know, when we talk about the curriculum at this level to. Mandate what teachers will be doing on a day to day basis. That's the the job of the, that's their professional judgment in the classroom. I think all the more reason why I like this amendment, because. The curriculum that we have before us. Is 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 in is not helpful enough in supporting teachers in making that decision, because there's, there's, there's so much there and things like that. I think it makes sense for. The educators in in at the high school in the social studies department to take a look at this and develop unit plans. That more thoughtfully adopt to more thoughtfully teach to the standards in a realistic way. That lesson plans can then be developed, just like, you know, just like any other course.
Ms. Hirsch.
This is a sidestep, but I had a quick question because you just mentioned something about not having assessments. Like we would obviously in AP. I assume that even if we weren't given assessments, this will be treated like every other course and have midterm and final, no?
Yes.
Or projects that would cover that.
Definitely.
I'm wondering if I could do something slightly different, but there's an amendment on the table, so I can. You have to vote on it or withdraw it.
No, I think, I think the the right way here would be to withdraw my amendment because it includes the biology piece. But for cleaner purposes, I think we should withdraw the original motion and put. A new motion on the table.
Well, why don't we withdraw and then we can vote on the amended motion as amended. But do you have a? I have a slightly different, but you should go because that was your concept. Motion then?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so did you?
Because is it better to segregate the two policies and just that's where I was going with withdraw the original motion, vote on each. Of the two courses separately. It's a little cleaner.
Okay, but so then, okay, that's fine. So why don't you do the bio one? Because that's obviously simple. And then we can talk about the second one again.
We have to have the original motion withdrawn first.
I will withdraw the original motion.
Okay. So who wants to put the emotion to approve?
I'll do the bio one.
Go ahead.
I had so much trouble on the other stuff earlier. I'd like to move that new course in honors anatomy and physiology. Be added to Greenwich High School course guide for the school year twenty two, twenty three school year.
Joe seconded it. Oh, sorry, Joe seconded it. All right, all in favor? Okay, that passes eight zero. Okay, Cody raises his hand. I'm just, I think there's a slightly better way to do this other motion, but I don't want to put it out there because this was. Your idea, so. Do you want to try something, Karen, or?
If you have a slightly better idea, why? Why keep us, you know, on the edge of our seats?
Because it's not really well formulated. It's. And exactly, um. Because I'm trying to find a compromise here and but I I'm just, I'm worried about, and I can't think of what it is, but I'm worried about a precedent that you're setting.
So the question then becomes, if we bring a few items back, we can, if we approve the course. They still are looking, it's listed here with an honors option. They have no understanding as to. There has been no discussions what they might do with an honors option. We approve the course. It can come back to us as a discussion as well. As to what they would be doing in an honors program. And if the teachers have had the opportunity to review the course, scope and sequence and find that it fits. Great. If they find that there is a certain unit that is not even necessarily, but scope and sequence doesn't fit. They can come back to us with that. I mean, I don't know, Mark, is that typically what you think would, you know, happen? If there was a revision?
I I think that you have to take a look at the materials that have been provided by the state. And look at how they would be adapted for an advanced level course. I'm not as familiar with the high school. Schedule, so I'm not certain how many days are actually allotted for an elective, if this is a year long elective or if this is a marking period. So a lot of that would take into consideration. When you talk about an accelerated class, usually there's an accelerated pace. But that is the work that the teachers would need to do in either a summer curriculum institute or as part of a curriculum advisory committee. At this point.
So there's two courses, Mark. It's the first semester, the first course is African American. And the second course is Puerto Rican and Latino. So they have it done into one course each semester, but together it's the. The studies of those different cultures.
Yes, it's a year long course.
Okay, I had an idea. Is there a way that I could? How about if we put, I mean, this is not, again, this is not, obviously not something I'm really excited about, but.
Kathleen, can I offer one brief comment?
I actually have to get a motion on the table at this point because we can't keep the discussion without an action. So hold on and then feel free. The. I'm going to say to put forth a motion to approve the black and Latino studies course. For the GHS course of study guide, but. The it, but it will need to have further vetting. Via our district curriculum committee. Does that make any sense?
Basically, you're just saying that we want to prove it is. We're, no, no, I'm just, just, I'm just trying to be, we're asking just our curriculum committee just to to do a once over to correct, you know. The same way they have done with every other course that we have, so that it falls in line with every other course. They have put their eyeballs. On this and and made sure it is is as robust and rigorous and follows the same. Way we handle our other courses.
Yes, and what I will say.
You need a second.
Okay, someone's.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So, and what I'd like to make clear in the interest of total transparency. Is that there are two members of our board that are on the district curriculum committee and they have a seat at that table. That does not mean it comes back to this board. It means it goes to the district curriculum committee. And that you and both of you are on it have a voice there, but I don't see it coming back to the board. And I want to be clear about what my motion was. In the interest of transparency.
The way the curriculum committee had worked in the past, that was sort of the case. The curriculum committee would, which is made up of of leadership and educators. Would review it and then they would probably present it, you know, it to to the full committee as a discussion item. So it's, you know, I could, we can certainly put our voice in, but it's not, it's being run differently this year because they're doing soup to nuts. All of our, all of our curriculum in in different scope and sequence. That's why they laid out a document at the start of the year as to. What they were doing when over the course of the next few years. And so I just want to ensure that we give them ample time, you know, we're not. Messing up everything else that they're looking at, but they should be taking, you know, at the very least to look. Just to make sure that this is in line with everything. The scope and sequence is in line and and is robust as all of our other courses. We want to make sure that our students are getting. Same rigorous, well thought out programs that we give to our students. In math, in science, et cetera. And I think that's what you're asking. But it wouldn't come back, it 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 wouldn't necessarily be discussed as a full committee. They they would go in and take a much, you know. A deeper dive and then come back with a recommendation.
Got it. Okay, any, sorry. So having now put that out there, other discussion on that item, since it's an action item now. Cody, did you want to say something now? Now that I have it on, you're on mute.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if I finally was able to. Sort of, uh, what was I going to say? Oh, yeah, on your precedent point. I think one way to to bifurcate this for when should be. By the higher level of scrutiny is when Hartford is the driving force of the curriculum. I think, Kathleen, you made the point that our teachers in Greenwich are better and. No offense to to other places. And it's one thing when things are homegrown and it's another thing when they're from the legislature. So just wanted to point out, there is somewhat of a. I feel like everyone feels the need to go, oh, this is, this is so amazing. I want this class, but it there, and there's nothing wrong with the class. It. There's a lot of interesting subject matter, but I do find it somewhat entertaining that. You know, I I don't know if you went back in the archives and looked over the last few years, how many times people have gotten up and asked for this class. But it's interesting that, you know, only when legislature and Hartford decided to. Require it to suddenly everyone feel that they need it. And that's not a comment unique to the class. It's a comment in general, because we could come up with. Probably, you know, an infinite number of interesting subjects to study and and probably the large number of marginalized groups. That are probably worthy of having their stories told. And so, you know, I think people should just reflect on. It's funny that when something is created by, especially by folks in Hartford, that everyone suddenly feels they need it. And maybe everyone can go home and think about what other classes they think we need and we can come up with them without having Hartford require us.
Karen just has to correct you on the record for something.
Just so that you know, common, you know, we have to teach to common core and and very specific, you know. Standards for every course and that does come from Hartford, every single one of those. And yes, we take them here and flesh them out.
Document for the anatomy class that we're creating.
That's not my point. My point is that you're saying it's been given to us and and I I'm saying I understand where you're coming from and saying that they've given us a three hundred page document. For a course, that being said. Our, yes, it's a scope and sequence that's being given to us as well, but. Everything has come from from Hartford for all of our courses, just so you're clear. As to what the standards we need to teach to.
Okay, anyway, next.
What I said.
Okay, sorry, Joe.
I think maybe we should call the question. What do you think?
I I think assuming, yeah, I guess we seconded my motion, so it's on the table. So thank you for the opportunity to do that. So all in favor of the motion. By show of hands, and then and then I'll do it as amended first. Is that pass or no? That's seven. Cody, are you interested or no?
I I, what was the motion? I'm not even sure what.
So the motion is, oh, gosh, I hope someone wrote it down. It was, um.
First, we're approving it and then the district curriculum committee is going to review it.
That's right. Thank you. Did you hear that? So we're going to approve the course, the black and Latino studies course. But it's then for the course of study guide, but then the district curriculum committee is to review it further.
And this is one of those where we have to vote for it anyways, because Hartford requires us to.
You, I swear, they should rename the capital. What would you say? Okay. Okay, so anyway, all in favor of this vote to accept the motion? Okay, that's seven or no, eight, zero. We're good. Sorry, that was the motion. I had an amended. It was straight up. Okay. Oh, God, thank you. So that passes eight, zero. Very good job. Okay. No, last action item. I don't want to put this. I'll put on the table, a motion to authorize the financial report for period ended January thirty one, twenty twenty two. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Mr. O'Keefe, can you walk us through this?
Okay, the financial report as of January thirty first, twenty twenty two, our year to date actual. Through January is eighty four point five million, which is forty nine percent of our full year budget. Compared to prior year, our year to date spending is up one point eight million or two point two percent. Drivers of the net increase are increases in salaries and supplies. And partly offset by net decreases in services. Salaries are up one point three million or one point eight percent. Supplies are up one point seven million or eighty eight percent due to the residual effect of the. Pre spend activity at the end of fiscal twenty. Services are down net. Transportation is down, but partly offset by increases in special ed tuition. The transportation variance, which is down, will self correct by the end of the year. However, the special ed tuition, as we all know, is. Is deteriorating. We, we previously projected a five hundred thousand dollar exposure for the year. We're now up to one point three. Due to higher volume of placements and settlements and several of which are quite expensive. Onto capital, overall capital available balances are down to twenty six point three million, a decrease of nine hundred thousand from the prior period. All of that nine hundred K decrease was in older projects, which is where we're putting a. Uh, all of that nine hundred K decrease was in, uh, older projects, which is where we're putting a lot of our efforts to, uh, significantly reduce the amount of, uh, prior year projects since the start of September of twenty. Uh, our older project balance has decreased by almost seventeen million dollars or about sixty percent. Um, again, we remain focused on closing out all projects, but special focus on the, uh, projects prior to, uh, full year twenty-two. Food services, uh, continuing to see low cash sales relative to the budget due to the mandatory, uh, free meals for all, which is in place until the end of the year. However, we're seeing some very strong state reimbursements. Uh, and, you know, we expect that will continue through the end of the year. Uh, strong in that I believe we may be able to come close to achieving our overall budget. So the shortfall in cash sales, I think we have a good shot at offsetting that in full with higher, uh, state reimbursements. For expenses, uh, we're up year to year in salaries and cost of food and supplies. But, uh, we expect that we'll probably, uh, come in close to budget for the year. Um, there's a chart in the back on, uh, that I put in every month on sped tuition. You'll see that the, uh, the current assessment is that will be, we'll close the year at about eight point six, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars more uh, than we had previously projected. So again, it's higher volume of, uh, placements and settlements and, uh, several of which are quite expensive. Uh, there's a chart also on S R two. So S R two, I'll recap, the S R two grant was four point three million dollars. Uh, we spent, um, we spent two point seven in full year twenty-one. The remaining one point six, uh, is being spent in full year twenty-two. Uh, the detail of the one point six in twenty-two, social workers, uh, math interventionists, which is, uh, in our operating plan, uh, beginning in full year twenty-three and additional A L P resources, uh, also P P E and classroom supplies. Uh, there's also behind that is a, uh, two-page A R P chart that breaks out the grant, grant for the, uh, three-year period is nine point six million. Broken up into full year twenty-two, uh, we project spending three million of the nine-six, full year twenty-three, four point six, and full year twenty-four, two point zero. Of the nine-six in total, uh, our projection is that certified resources and benefits will, will be about five point three million. Uh, P P E over the three-year period, uh, about a million dollars. Uh, H vac related spending, but a little over seven hundred thousand. Um, the, this, uh, projected five hundred thousand dollar spend for the G H S Student Center redesign. Let's see. Uh, community connections, another four hundred K, teaching and learning, uh, expenses one point three and all others about three hundred thousand dollars. That's a quick synopsis of uh, the proposed spending over the, uh, twenty-two to twenty-four time period. Any questions?
Yes, uh, Ms. Downey.
It's like a game show. Who got their hands up first? Um, Sean, um, let's go, the out-of-district tuition and settlements. Um, obviously it's a very large number.
Yeah.
Um, how are we going to manage this? We're now, you know, we're, we're closing in, it's February. Um, we have a couple of months of school left. You know, how do you foresee us being able to pay that, um, some, given that it's, you know, way over budgeted?
We, we've already identified a number of, uh, savings. For example, E S Y, uh, uh, savings during the summer will help to, uh, partly offset that. We are also identifying now, uh, other items. I feel confident that by the end of the year, we will have, uh, the means to offset this number.
Ms. Kowalski, sir.
Yeah, I had a question on the, the last page on the S R three funding. What is the school climate consultant for seven thousand nine hundred dollars?
Let's see.
Anne, is that Patty Jomo's work?
That is Patty Jomo's work and that is one of the requirements of the grant. That's an area that they felt was really important was family and community connections. So that is Patty Jomo's, Jomo's work, which she has started with our, some of our elementary schools and our goal is to have all of our elementary schools go through this particular program that she has developed, which is excellent. And one of our middle schools, one or two of our middle schools. So that's the goal for the end of twenty-four.
And can I just correct one thing, Anne? I don't think you meant the word requirement. We have different buckets that we can actually, um, put in the grant, but, uh, this, this one was highly, um, encouraged, family and community engagement. And we initially started, I believe it was in nineteen twenty with the Alliance Grant and our Title I schools.
You are correct. I used the wrong word, thank you.
Talking about the wrong thing. I didn't ask about the family and community engagement. I asked about the school climate consultant.
Oh, I'll have to, I'll have to double check that. Do you have it in front of you, Anne?
Yes, that's the work that's being done at the high school to improve the school climate.
What do you mean that it's not properly heated? I, I.
Then, oh, it's not, it's not climate as in heating and, um, uh, H vac system. It's the school environment, making sure it's a welcoming environment that teachers know how to interact with students, know who those students are, making sure that students feel safe. That's the school climate. I'm sorry.
So, uh, understood. So how come it's different? We're only spending seventy-nine hundred dollars this year and then yours going out, we have thirty-five hundred. Is this a, this is an individual that we're paying for?
It's an ongoing, uh, professional learning and they will be working with the students and the teachers in the building and also parents.
And then what is the additional P C G action planning that we have a hundred thousand for? We originally paid them, I think, two hundred thousand for their action planning last year that was in the budget. Why are we paying them an additional one hundred thousand dollars?
This was the work for this current school year, putting together the action planning. It includes, um, things that were in our recommendations. Um, like, uh, the U D L training, uh, they've been managing that to help us train the entire district. Um, and this was, um, this was discussed at the fin, with the finance committee, sort of the finance committee.
So do we have a contract for them for the services that they're going to be providing?
We, we do have, um, they invoice this monthly for the work that they do. Um, we have the action planning and that was based on an hourly rate. And then we have, um, the same thing for like the U D L training, which is huge, as you can imagine, training the entire staff. So yes.
Sorry, Michael Joseph.
Yeah, so Sean, on the special ed tuition, I don't, I don't know if you can answer this or not. The, um, the proposed program next year in, in upper elementary, um, do we know if that's going to, um, um, address any of these needs or is that?
I mean, I know Stacy's on the call, but what I, I, what I can say is three of our most significant needs, it would not address. These are very unique situations.
And then can you remind me what the three point three in S R, um, and S R two and S R three, the three point three A L P is?
And last year it was utilized, um, for the super block when we were really high into COVID at the very beginning. Um, and the buildings all had a one point seven, so it gave them a point three bump. And this year coming in, we maintained that. It looks a little bit different than it did last year um, because we were in a different place with COVID, but that's a portion at all of our, um, elementary schools.
Any other questions or can I call the vote? All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the financial report. All in favor? This is eight, zero. Great. Okay, so now we're going to go to agenda planning. I know that, um, Christina, you mentioned the high school entryway coming back in March. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, Joe.
Co- couple of things. Um, we had talked about Parks and Rec and Joseph Sliano who might come up and I know that many of the board members for the two years I've been involved have certainly an opinion on Parks and Rec and the services they provide for our, uh, our, our district. So, uh, uh, maybe you could find a, a way to slot a possibility of having him in so we can ask him some questions, uh, as long as it, uh, it lines up with his, uh, uh, his, uh, schedule. So that, that, that's one thing.
That's a good idea. I remember we did that a few years ago, um, actually when Ralph was the interim super.
Well, good.
We, we did it. So it's a good revisit of that. What? I did. I guess I, well, I'm not taking credit for it. You're right. It was me that brought that. So.
Great minds think alike.
Absolutely. Athletic minds, you know, so, all right, go ahead, Joe.
Second is, I caught wind, and I don't know, uh, Dr. Jones, Tony, if you know anything about a, a sports donation in excess of five thousand dollars. Uh, I, I, there is one I caught wind of, so we, uh, from what I understand, anything, any donations, we have to, over five thousand dollars, we have to approve it. So why don't we, so it doesn't delay the apparatus that it's, uh, donated for, uh, maybe slot it in for the next meeting. So, uh, maybe we can find out the details of that, get it in and vote for it or vote on it.
Yeah, that has not risen to my level yet, so I'll check with our A D.
Thank you.
Sorry, Michael Joseph.
Yeah, we, we've talked about, um, just so we don't forget about it, we talked about probably reconvening in executive session to get an update about how the high school has adopted its safety protocols, um, post the incident in November. I think we heard that again from P TAC tonight. So I just want to make sure we didn't lose that.
It's a good point. And I actually had reached out to Chief Heavey to sort of see if we can do a joint town hall. So it'd be not just us, but for the public. Um, so that's a good reminder. I, I know he's very busy, but I will, uh, follow up again because I, and I think we should make a broader, I think it's something I talked about, I know at least with a few of you. And, um, I mentioned to the chief, we might want to not just do it for the high school, but for middle schools and elementary schools and for everyone to get very comfortable in general. Karen?
Hirsch. Uh, no, I was just going to ask, you know, and I guess it's not necessarily for agenda planning, but I was going to say, once we move a little bit forward or hear back from B E T and our funding requests and interim approvals, um, having a date that we add to, even if it's not necessarily for board meeting, just a, a town hall or, or something for central, because I know that had been asked for, uh, as well. But just, just to consider that we, we should consider a date.
Sure, uh, Dr. Jones, go ahead.
Um, we will be doing, um, you know, forums and meeting with different groups and, and the right, the first, the week that the school was closed, um, Dan Watson and I did a P T A, um, P T A meeting and we wore the whole meeting. So, um, there were, there were several hundred people that were on that call. Um, so they did have a really, I think, a good forum and an opportunity to ask a lot of questions. Um, once we know the funding is approved, we'll start, you know, we're going to have to do a lot of meetings to, definitely in the next few months.
Yeah, I just, I just meant, I, I think it's really hard for a lot of people to understand, like, even, even the some of us on the board. Uh, the whole process, the timeline, how, the, the different pieces and how they fall. And it's just, I think for a lot of the parents, it might be very helpful to, to understand why it might not have a, they may not have a student that comes into a new school. Like Kathleen, who's a fourth grader right now, you were saying, yes?
Fourth grade, but maybe we'd see it in eighth grade, maybe. Right, incredible. Okay. Uh, anything else for agenda planning? Don't worry, there's still time. Okay, but, um, okay. Anyone have another motion for me? Laura Costin, yes?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? Karen Hirsch, all in favor? That passes. Joe, come on, eight, zero. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks for hanging on. Have a good evening. Stay well.